Good evening and welcome to the October 7th, 2019, meeting of the Merrimack School Board. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A couple of housekeeping items. Board member Schoenfeld is excused from this evening's meeting. We hope she feels much better quickly. And our student rep Johanna Corola will be here hopefully late. She's on our volleyball team. And go Hawks! I hope she had a good match. So, on to item number two, which is public participation. Anyone from the public that would like to come speak, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close public participation. Go on to item number three, which is the request to conduct research at Merrimack High School to support the development of a mobile app to support healthy relationships for students in grades nine to 12. I invite to the table Delilah Smith and Sharon Porter from the Prevention Innovations Resource Center at the University of New Hampshire. So, thank you for coming and welcome.
And while our friends are setting up, I'll just say that Sharon Potter is not able to join us tonight, so Delilah Smith will do the work of two.
Thank you. Just housekeeping, you're going to want to sit where you can mic or use the portable mic. But the light has to be on and glow, so just hit the button in front.
All set?
You should be good.
Alright, good evening. My name is Delilah Smith and I am from Prevention Innovations Research Center at UNH. And I'm here to talk to you a little bit about a project that we're looking to conduct throughout the state of New Hampshire. Sorry, this is not... My apologies. There we go. Okay. So, what I'd like to do is talk to you a little bit about what Prevention Innovations is, a little bit about our proposed project, and some examples of prevention and response features. And then open it up to question and answer. So, Prevention Innovations Research Center is a research center that is, looks for external funding and to conduct research out into the field. And then, once we conduct that research, that research informs our practice. So, what we specify is, we're really looking at violence prevention and also response-based features. And so, I'll talk to you a little bit about that. But we are a research center that really engages the community and brings it back into practice, whether it be in the high school setting, a work setting, a college-based setting. So, why Merrimack High School? When we first were notified that we received funding for this project, we met Carl Ladd had actually written a letter of support. And we then set up a meeting with Carl. And Carl talked to us a lot about the schools that are doing some really great work. And Merrimack was one of those schools. That when we talked about it, we talked about what you're doing and social-emotional learning and curriculum development. And so, we then scheduled a meeting with Mark, the superintendent, and we talked a little bit about what that project was. And he suggested we come present to the board. A lot of our work in this area is developing self-awareness, looking at social and emotional learning. And so, we really feel strongly that this is what we want to propose. And I'll talk to you a little bit about that. The proposed project goal is to develop a mobile app for high school students that encourages healthy relationships and supports social and emotional learning through the use of technology. The proposed project overview, so again, we have received funding from the National Science Foundation to develop this mobile app that will promote healthy relationships among high school students. This project has the support of the New Hampshire Deputy DOE Commissioner Christine Brennan, as well as Executive Director of the New Hampshire School Administrators Association, Carl Ladd. Upon completion of this particular project, New Hampshire schools will be given access to the mobile app and will be encouraged to use the app to support current and social and emotional learning initiatives. The project has three phases. And schools can decide to participate in one, two, or all three of those phases. And I'll talk to you a little bit about what those phases are. The first phase is designing the actual app. And our timeline is in October to the end of December. Our goal is to really engage administrators, high school students, teachers, and parents to look at what it is high school students need and want out of a mobile app. It's really important that we're looking at, we're not looking at content, but we're looking at why students use apps, why do students download apps? So, it's really getting that information from the administrators, from the teachers, as well as from students and parents. What to expect, what we are hoping to do, once we collect that data, is to develop a prototype of a high school healthy relationship app that is tailored to your school community. The project objectives is to conduct interviews with key administrators, conduct focus groups with teachers and professional staff, and conduct focus groups with parents as well as students. The second part of this project is Phase Two, which is prototype development and feedback. What we'd like to do is gather the data that we have, and take a look at the data we've collected via students, teachers, parents, and administrators, and then create a prototype of this particular app. When we create that prototype, our hope is to go back and demonstrate the prototype and solicit some feedback from students. Project objectives for that second phase is looking at conducting focus groups to gain that feedback, conduct two to four focus groups with teachers, parents, and then hopefully three to five focus groups with students. This is not, it's not set in stone. We really are just looking at gaining as much information from your school district as possible in order to really engage the community. Phase Three is delivering that final product, and that is in September. So, our hope is that we create the prototype in the winter and then bring it back to your students, bring it back to your staff. And then, in the summer, we're hoping to actually develop the app. Then, encourage your students to download the app and again, gain feedback. We're a research center, so we really feel as if it's important not to develop something that students don't have any input in. And so, that is really what we're aiming to get. I'm going to give you a few examples of some of the things that have arisen in some focus groups. And one of them is a prevention-based feature called "Time to Leave." Time to Leave is something that, if a student has the app, our hope is that Time to Leave will be something that it sends a student, or whoever downloads this app, a fake call or a fake text to get them out of an uncomfortable situation. We're looking at prevention-based features as well as resources. And this is just one of them that has really arisen as something that students are interested in as a prevention-based feature. The other prevention-based feature that has come up in focus groups and interviews is "Expect Me." And "Expect Me" is a feature where a student can actually notify three friends, three family members, that they are leaving school and heading to work, or heading from work and heading home. And they'll be home in 30 minutes, 45 minutes. This actual feature then will notify those friends and family members. And if that student is not home in 45 minutes, it sends another text saying, "Could you check up on their friend?" A feature that we've gotten some great feedback around is GPS. And there's a GPS function. And so, a student might be able to, when they notify their friends and family members, that friend or that family could actually track that student so that they make sure that they're on their way home and they are safe. So, there is a GPS function that can be enabled or disabled. So, those are some of the feedback we've gotten from some of the focus groups we've conducted. And then, one of the response features that we have taken a look at is customizable to your school. And it is "Find Help." So, all the resources that a student might need, both at school and in the community, are right there on this app. For instance, if they need to reach a counselor, or the police, or whatever it may be, there's all the resource. And this is going to look very different at the high school level, but it's really looking at putting the resources in students' hands. Now, we don't know at this point if it's going to be effective for high school students, these particular features. And that's why we want to really look at gaining some feedback from students, from parents, from family members, and from administrators. That is, I mean, I could talk on and on about this project, but I really wanted to be able to see if anybody has questions because I know that you probably may have quite a few.
I will open up to questions from, so far, see Andy?
So, thanks for presenting this. It's really interesting, especially looking at sort of the focus groups and the sort of development process that you're going through. So, one of my questions, you started answering some of exactly what the goals of the app were. Because I guess, like I typically do, I think three steps ahead as how students would consume this app down the road. And whether it's something that individual students should have the choice, whether the school would need to embrace it. Because it's interesting that you've got like the send a call to the phone to give you sort of, it's sort of like, if you've got a bad date, you want your friend to call you to leave or something, which is kind of interesting. The piece that's weird, though, is the, you say, "I'm leaving and heading back home. I'll be there in 30 minutes." And then, there's this GPS function. Because to me, that rings bells of, you know, privacy and other things like that. So, thinking two steps ahead, when this application is done, we as a board would have to discuss the way we'd want to use it. But I don't want to prevent my future doubts from opening this up to students that want to be involved in focus groups and stuff.
Absolutely. And I think that that is just one feature that we've gotten feedback around. It may not be a feature that arises and students, high school students, may not be interested in that feature. What we did go round and round about was that GPS function. And we've really talked extensively about privacy and the issues that could arise if, in fact, GPS was used in a negative way. So, the safety feature we've added is that if a student were to notify someone that they are heading home, they could then, they enable the GPS. As soon as they arrive home safely, they can disable that GPS. And you can no longer know where that student is and track that student unless that student enables that GPS again. Unlike some of the GPS apps, like Find Friends, which is continuous. And once you give up your location or give up that GPS, you have it for a while.
So, my last question, can you give some other examples? I mean, it's sort of like healthy relationships. What sort, is there resources that the app would give or attempt to give for students or kids this age to get help? I mean, you had the thing like phone numbers for police and therapists and stuff like that. But is there sort of like more generic information that would be there, more general places to go to find? I mean, that's, I'm just curious what the scope in your mind this is.
Our hope is that that is going to arise in the focus groups and interviews. But our initial thoughts are information on healthy relationships. What is a healthy relationship? And we're not talking about dating relationships solely or intimate relationships solely. We're talking about relationships as a whole, relationships with your parents, relationships with your friends. So, it's information-based as well. And that is our hope. But we did these focus groups with college-age students. And we thought that the resources would be what they wanted. And that is not at all what they wanted. What came out of focus groups were "Expect Me," "Time to Leave," the preventative-based features that they really loved. And we, as much older, we came in thinking they'd want resources. And so, that's why we really feel like we need to go to that target audience to figure out what they need, if they even want it or need it.
I think Mark has something he can add as well, and I see other questions coming up, so.
I just want to make sure that people understand what Delilah and her colleagues are asking for is really to use, you know, Merrimack students and parents and faculty as really beta testers to try to, you know, understand what could be, what from our user group would be information for them to develop something that would be, you know, used and helpful. This isn't about asking our district to adopt, you know, an app that would be officially like an app that we would require people to have. It would be like any other app that a student would be able to access or not. We're just being able to provide UNH with some information from real people about what might work. So, just so that we're clear about that.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Were your questions answered? Okay, so I believe I saw Brandy and Johanna. And I hope you had a good match. So, but, so I'll just go down the row. So, Brandy and then Johanna.
So, I misunderstood, actually, and thank you for clarifying. I thought that this was, we were going to be utilizing our student resources as well as faculty and parents, not only, once we got through the testing phase, that we could customize this to our district. Did I misunderstand that?
Well, if and when this app is developed, then yes, in fact, you can customize it to your district.
Okay.
And then, that, sorry, but then that would be the time. If we wanted to even consider, that would be the time that we would address some of those questions about whether it's something we wanted to adopt and wanted to utilize to customize. But this is not even close to that.
Okay. If we ever got to that point, my only question would be relative to sustainability. Not my only, but that would be one that I would be interested in understanding deeper only because if it is customized, times change, who's responsible for that? I mean, there's just a lot of information relative to that. So, just something down the road to think about. Relative to exactly what this is currently, is there a way? How do we handle privacy for how students, let's just say, we have 50 students that sign up and say, "Yes, let's go for this," and their parents all agree and we're all on board? How do we work their privacy? Have you spoken to Nancy? Have we spoken to Nancy? No. Okay. I'm just curious to know about student privacy and how we would handle that relative to collecting data.
With collecting data, what we are looking at collecting, we are not collecting, it is confidential. We're not collecting names. We're not collecting, what we are collecting is the year of the student, gender of the student, and that's really all we're collecting. And then, the information actually is looking at, again, not specific content, but it's looking at, how do you, as a student, use mobile apps? What attracts you to a mobile app? So, it's really, we're really looking at what students want in an app, but steering away and not addressing content at all. So, we're really looking at that. So, there's not a lot, there is no personal information that is being asked of the student.
Go ahead.
And you also, could you just briefly describe, this is going to be subject to IRB, right? Could you just briefly describe for the board what that stands for and what that means?
Yes. So, in order to conduct any type of research, we have to provide the internal research board all of our information, how we're going to conduct the research, how we're going to ensure that we're not collecting personal data. And it's under high scrutiny because, especially when we're talking about students who are under the age of 18. And so, that has been reviewed over and over and over again. And we're close to getting IRB approval because they come back and say, "Could you make these changes?" And they're just really, what the IRB is ensuring is that whoever we are working with and collecting data from, we're not harming them, they're safe, and we're not collecting personal data.
Okay. And Johanna?
That's pretty much my question, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Okay. So, if there are no other questions, oh, there are, okay. Cindy? Sorry, put your hands up.
No, I just wondered, I was going to make a motion, but if you have comments.
Well, let me ask a question, then you make a motion because it might change your motion just a little bit. So, I noticed on Phase One that you mentioned that the Phase One of the research would be October to December, and it happens to be October. So, I have a feeling that we would want to probably waive the two-week rule if we are in favor of this, so that we can move you forward to being able to get that research, like outreach done to get that research started. Would that be fair?
Yes, that is fair. But we do realize that we are a little bit late in the game. And as a team, we've discussed that. And as a team, we would move into January. We're just trying to make sure that that prototype in Phase Two is developed in a decent amount of time so that you have the time to review that if you so desire.
And if one other question before you make your motion, because I'm going to totally let you do that. And that is, the research, I think, that you're talking about with social-emotional learning and managing relationships, that's right along the lines of what we try to do as a district as well and are evolving our curriculum. So, are we going to be able to have access to that research or whatever? Are you going to have a, basically, a paper to support, you know, what this app was designed to do and how, you know, how it will address those issues?
Yes, absolutely.
Excellent. So, because I think very valuable that we'll be getting that research in return as well. But I think just, you know, anything that would promote student safety with new strategies and technologies to foster that, I think, is all along the lines of what we would favor, so. So, thank you. So, on that note, I think you might have a motion.
I would say that it's my hope that, you know, we support, as a school board, innovative approaches to problems that our students are facing, that we support safety of our students. And we also support education in general and in the state. So, to further this research, to be able to allow our student body with their parents' approval and our parents, something that's totally optional, something that we're not taking personally identifiable information, I'm supportive of this effort. So, I'd like to make a motion to request that we allow, let me see how I want to do it. Delilah Smith, Sharon Potter from Prevention Innovations Resource Center, or in general, I'd like to make a motion that we allow Prevention Innovations Resource Center at the University of New Hampshire to conduct research at Merrimack High School to support the development of a mobile app to support healthy relationships for students in grades nine through 12, and waiving the two-week rule.
Is there a second? Seconded by Brandy. A discussion of the motion. Andy?
So, this is actually a question for Mark. How will, if we, if we as a board approve this motion, how would the students and the parents and the staff be contacted as to the availability of this and whether they want to participate?
I would, Delilah and I briefly talked about this today, so go ahead.
I think that my hope is that I would work in collaboration with Mark and key administrators to coordinate those meetings. We have consent forms for each of those different groups. So, we're ensuring that they're giving permission, their parents are giving permission. But it would be a coordinated effort between Mark and key administrators.
Actually, my question was, how are you going to?
Recruit?
Recruit, thank you.
You're welcome.
Struggling with the word.
I saw you struggle.
Yes. Well, I mean, because I think the packets talk about email being sent. So, my question is, is the intent of the district to send email to every student and every parent and every administrator? And is that something we've done for other non-scholastic things before in a proactive basis? I want a district's perspective on this. That's what I'm trying to get to.
Well, I would tell you that there is no real precedent for this kind of thing, so what?
Sorry. There is no real district precedent for this exact kind of thing. So, what I'm trying, what we're trying to say is that if the board would approve this, then Delilah and I, in coordination with the principals, will talk about how will we do that recruiting? Will it be everybody? Will it be just 11th graders or 12th graders? And a lot of that, the reason I keep pointing is because a lot of that has to be consistent with the research goals that UNH has, which I can't speak to or dictate. So, we're going to have to kind of work together. And then, you know, we're not going to do anything that doesn't, you know, fit the bill for Merrimack, so. That's the best one, because there's not a whole lot of precedent for having done this.
And we have, we've talked to a number of different schools, and every school is very different. Some schools are using their health classes to generate student involvement. Others are sending out an email. And so, that's why we left that fairly open so that we could work with the superintendent and the key administrators to find out what works best for your school.
My only caution is, at least, this is my concern, maybe I'm the only one, is that if you use a distribution list of some sort, it's going to be emailed out. And I want to make sure that the privacy of the students stays within the district so that when a student does want to reach out back to this group, that there's not a personally identifiable way to know what kind of group they were in or whatever. I want individual students or individual parents to be able to reach out proactively, that's...
So, I imagine, we haven't talked about this, but I imagine that the way we would not recruit would be to have students respond to an email that they got recruiting. There would be a direction, if you're interested, see Mr. So-and-so or Mrs. So-and-so in guidance or whatever. I mean, those are, so I completely get your point, but that would be built in, too.
And we would never want to see that happen.
Right.
Cindy?
Yeah, I'd also like to just remind the group, too, that we have the Communications Committee, which is led by Nancy Rose, who's obviously very attentive to student privacy and whatnot. So, that might be a good charge for that group when it meets next.
Andy?
So, my personal opinion is I'm in favor of the concept of allowing students and staff and parents want to participate in this. I just want us, as a district, to be very cautious that we're not forcing any participation, that we're keeping it as anonymous and open as we can, so that parents that do have concerns about us overreaching potentially, that we've taken everything into account, right? That's my, because I never want to, for the sake of research, I never want to stop students from wanting to be involved, but I want to make sure we do it right. So, that's where the Communication Committee, as well as, you know, administrations, as well as Nancy Rose and everything, make sure that we're dealing with that properly, so.
And I would have to say, just on that, what I do have is faith. Faith and confidence, confidence is the better word, I think. Because there's definitely tangible work in the area of student privacy where our district has had members in administration, Nancy Rose namely, who's been in leadership of establishing protocols for student privacy, student privacy guidelines, infrastructure, et cetera. So, I don't think any of that would be compromised after all the work done. So, on that, I know that's a, it's a concern of the board that we... So I don't think any of that would be compromised after all the work done. So on that, I know that's, it's a concern of the board that we've, we've shared over many moons. I'm glad we reinforced that concern tonight, but I do think that that will be paramount to, to how they go forward in, in electing students. So, you know, I, we're very fortunate that way. Not all, not all schools have the, some of the leadership that we do, so. But I feel very good about what we can, what we can do to protect student privacy, and I think that's exactly what you want anyway.
It is.
So there you are. So if there are no other questions, we can put the motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none. The motion carries four, zero, zero. I have to practice that, because we usually have five. And so you have our blessing. We wish you a very good research period, and we look forward to seeing what results come of it, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You're doing great work.
Thank you.
We will move on to item number four, which is the Planning and Building Committee recommendation regarding SAU consolidation and related property use. So I invite to the table Chair of the Planning and Building Committee, which is Rich Hendricks, and I will also help introduce with Matt Chevanel. Welcome. Great, thank you, Rich.
While Rich is getting settled, just wanna make mention that the, the superintendent and I attended the most recent, not most recent, but the one prior to Planning and Building Committee meeting, where we talked about basically looking at the central office project more in light of the entire campus of Merrimack High School and how the flow is, and to look at everything, kinda like all the way down to Ogara Drive as being part of the high school campus and the high school traffic flow, and where the central office could fit into that with the reduction of three buildings or two buildings that we're talking about right now, and how a redesign could be done for the future. So Rich's, has a sketchup up on the board that he, he did himself, and it's just one option. But this is something we're looking to have potentially as a budget item for consultant fees to get us to a number of scenarios that we can look at, and kinda see how we could do the project once to make this entire area a better asset to Merrimack School District. I've been on the Town Center Committee for a number of years. We were going to have a meeting this past Friday, but we didn't. And I wanna, after Rich gets done with his presentation, kinda bring that up to them, because they've been really waiting for us to do something to make the loop, as they call it, Ogara Drive, McElwain, a walkable hub. And I really feel if we look at this long-term with a vision and planning that vision, it can kind of become that. And so there's a great opportunity here, and Rich is just gonna talk about some examples. I've gone on too long. He has the picture up right now on PowerPoint, and so I'll just kinda pass it on to him. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. This will be a very different presentation discussion on our favorite topic, a new district central office. The topic actually says SAU consolidation and related property use. We call it central office. SAU is, not too many people even know what that means, so we just keep it, you know, Merrimack School District Central Office. Prior to night, we've always presented this as kind of a standalone building proposal. And tonight, we're, as Matt alluded to, we're proposing a very far different approach to not looking at this as a need of a single building, but to actually look at it as an entirety. The Planning and Building Commission, Commission, Committee met with our new superintendent. Dr. McLaughlin came to our meeting a few weeks ago, and we, we re-looked at the entire process. A lot of projects are done in steps, in piecemeal. You get the building, now what? Well, we might take this one down. Then what? Well, we might pave here, we might pave there. So we are stepping back as a result of this idea, and we're going to propose to look at everything. As Matt said, a whole campus approach. It may look like a large project, but actually simply, it's looking at everything at once. We feel with a professional plan, we'll be able to answer, you'll be able to answer a lot of the follow-up questions that have been previously asked. Again, you build an office, then you go back to demolish, then you go pay for parking, locations, and each being treated separately. What we came up with is to look at this project in its entirety, and again, the sketch above is a concept, an idea, just when we mentioned the area that we're looking at, some of the ideas that we, that we've come up with, this would all be vetted, of course, by a professional engineer. So our objective, our objective for this presentation is to ask that you look at a new district central office as part of a redesign of the entire high school campus. Planning and Building Commission would like to ask to add into your budget in this upcoming year, money to have a full, comprehensive master plan, prepared by a professional engineer and design company, to show, when looked at in total, how this area will look when it is completely done, and how it will help not only the school district, but as Matt alluded to, how it will help community activities as well. I listed a couple areas that we'd like to see as part of this overall plan. The space is being rebuilt, repaired, replaced. That is currently part of this high school parking lot area. So again, this is a concept only. It is fairly to scale. I did take some time with it. I get tired of drawing parking lot lines, and so that's why you've got a little bit of fish scales going on. But it's, it's a pretty good accurate representation of how things would fit. That is an eight thousand square foot office building. It would accommodate three tennis courts and so forth. The first thing I find stunning to say, but we want you to delay any vote on a central office until at least April twenty twenty-one. This will allow the committee and the board to review the costs and the plans associated with the new facility, and how it fits into this whole layout and footprint on the campus. We, if you notice with the central office, we would like to see, recommend, for the professional engineers doing this, to remove the former Sarah, uh, S- Sures, thank you, or the red building, as we call it. This is very consistent with previous discussions concerning that property, that is actually now owned by the school district. We call the primary reason for the purchase of that was for the land that it is now on. Matt can kinda fill in a few blanks here. It will save something like forty thousand dollars a year right off the bat, because you do need to have minimal heat and some maintenance of it. He's given previous reports on the horrible condition it is. Even the renovation of it was rather not very encouraging. Past tenants did not maintain it, they did not keep it up, and it was added on several times. So until a final layout is made, we would suggest, if nothing else, you could have some temporary parking in that spaces.
As Rich said, and what the board had always said throughout the, the process of acquiring this property, I just wanna stress this important point once again, that the purpose of purchasing this property was always stated as acquiring the land. If the building could have been renovated for a use that would be beneficial to us, that would have been a bonus. But the land was always the value in this purchase, and was the main reason why we acquired it. Now lastly, when I went a few months, that was during the summertime, with Sullivan Construction, through the building, who brought in several contractors, they gave it a closer look. We had done an engineering report previously to that, maybe four months ago, that kinda listed the ills that needed to be corrected in order to just have the building continue on as it is currently. But in listening to the contractors and listening to Sullivan Construction, you know, you don't know what you have until you start opening some spaces up, like the ceilings. And so they took a look up there, and, you know, some of the pitching of the roof doesn't lend itself gracefully enough to take on a renovation. So you don't really know what you have until you open up the walls. So it would be the logical, the logical next step would be to look at this not as a renovation, but as something that served our original purpose, which, which was to acquire this building for the land, and then to utilize it somehow in the master plan. That site could be the building, that site could be a parking lot, the building could be someplace else. But this is something we wanna look at.
Of course, we want to see a new district, excuse me, new district office building being built. Recommendation, of course, that'd be built during probably summer months to minimize the noise and disruption of the school day, and the loss of parking spaces at least will be temporary while that construction's going on. We feel this gives us plenty of time to look at the costs and design of a new building during this upcoming year. The need for this building has been discussed numerous times through my ten years on this committee, and believe it or not, ten to fifteen years prior to my being on the committee. Again, the purchase of the red building was the best location we found to, to situate this, and this is how this whole project got going. Another thing, just again, the, you know, kind of our, what can we do? Let's make a town enhancement. We have that one acre parcel property that years and years ago, we even considered for the new building. If you notice on this little sketch, it will accommodate three brand-new tennis courts. A, you've got a tennis team in high school that no longer has to travel, which was a huge concern in previous discussions, walk across the parking lot, and they now have a home, home courts. The rest of the time, you've got three brand-new tennis courts for the town to use. The whole parking lot in the front there would be dedicated tennis courts. So you've got an enhancement to town recreational facilities. Matt mentioned the Town Center Committee. That's just kind of often here. This is a sidewalk that I've tried to illustrate with some trees, so to speak, to keep it in some kind of an area, put some benches maybe, respite, or just to watch other people play tennis. So a little bit of a small little recreation area for everyone to enjoy. That would be tied into the sidewalks that are currently there, and then the town center would, you know, kinda complete the loop as, as they are. You'd have a sidewalk going up the tennis courts, you'd have a sidewalk going on the other parking space, which would be for the superintendent's office, and of course, a sidewalk in front of it. This little space here is not by accident. If in some time period, you would have to expand this at all, I can't see expanding by much, but if you did, you've got some extra land there that could certainly be accommodated. When they looked at this twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, believe it or not, what was IT? What were some of the, you know, the other people that have existed? Special needs and special ed is a whole nother, that, that really didn't even exist twenty-five years ago in the form we see it. So never say never in terms of expanding, much is building new. Obviously, we'd like to see, if you notice, there's a few buildings missing here. We just put possibly future parking, maybe the additional handicap spots for the high school, and this becomes just more parking where the current blue building is. So we'd like to see what their opinion is as far as removing the blue building and the green building. We also would like to see a little redesign for this traffic flow. One of the things we came up with, though the committee is not unanimous on this, is making this Ogara Drive one-way between the hours of two to two-thirty for the buses that are exiting the, the facility. It would expedite buses leaving this area sooner, because instead of having one big long line, you'd have them split into two, you'd make a quick left, right, and it gets people out of there quicker, and you're not having buses compete with cars that are trying to come in, and either students are coming back to the school for their sports or activities, you know, parents picking things up, it would be a little bit orderly. This is also not unintentional. This is a clear-cut path, and these are little boundaries here, little, I don't. This is actually a, a border that I stuck in, so the superintendent's office and the student parking has some differentiation, so people aren't backing up into each other. A little more clear-cut, because right now, you're, you're, it's like a slalom course, you're dodging telephone poles, and I'm not sure what part is the old Brentwood parking lot and what part is the special services parking lot, so it kinda cleans it up a little bit. And again, that's just an idea, they may come up with something entirely different. The road would be closed, it would go back to two-thirty, because of course, we have the elementary school, and parents have to be able to get into that, to pick up their kids for that. So it's a very different approach than what we've had. First of all, for us to step back and say, no, let's take a look at this. I think it's quite exciting. And when you start putting all the pieces together, it makes a lot more sense to make this as a one proposal. Again, in the past, it's, well, we'll do the building. Well, don't we gotta knock some down? Well, that's, guess we'll need a parking lot. Well, I guess we'll need to pave something. So I think this gives you and the voters and the townspeople something to say, okay, how, how does, what's the end game of this? How does this all fit together? And the money's being asked to have a professional come in, I mean, this is nice, but have a professional come in and look at, you know, where exactly you're gonna put the light poles, you know, does the sketch make any sense? What are their ideas on traffic flow? Does it make sense to have Ogara one-way? There's been all sorts of arguments for that for years. So that is our idea for you.
I see Cindy, Andy, and I didn't see. Okay, and we're, we're keeping an open mind.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for coming, and thank you for the update, and I agree with the approach. I think that sometimes you do just have to take the step back and look at the big picture, particularly in light of some of the updates we've done in the same general facility with the parking over at Master Cola, and so on and so forth. I have had parents reach out to me regarding the parking issue at the high school, so I think that's really important to look at. I've even asked for it to come up on an upcoming agenda item, to really look at the safety there. How do we maximize the parking? There's that dirt lot, you know, what do we do with that dirt lot, and how do we create a safe environment for our students to travel? Is it safe, or how do we make it safer, if it needs to be? So those are some things I'd like to see included if we go out to the experts, which we did with the parking lot as well at Master Cola. The other thing I wanted to add was, when we look at central office, and there's probably been discussion on this, and I'm sure there's lots of other things, but I would be interested in looking at, you know, how do we get meeting space? You know, it seems like meeting space is always hard to get around anywhere in the district. You know, can we get rooms that have partitions, that you could have a large space for a lot of people with good AV equipment, as well as rooms that could divide up for workshops and things like that?
That's, actually, in, we looked at the square footage, Matt kinda sat down with these engineers. That is one of the items put in here. Originally, we had a little bit, a little bit bigger conference room that honestly was necessary. And the idea of partitions is exactly what came out. It's not entirely, I mean, you've noticed there's like a little L shape to this, and that was, to kinda remind me, you're gonna have that meeting space that you're gonna have to have open. So that's, that's kinda by design. So that is absolutely in the design of this at some point.
That's great. And I was gonna mention the traffic study issue you already did. All I recall is the voting a few years back where Ogara did go one-way, and that created a real big issue just in general, but I'm sure that's just due to
I mean, again, just, just my little knowledge of it, I put between two and two-thirty, excuse me. That's just to get those buses out of there so they can come to the music and go their ways. So I did, I looked at the high school, you know, last week, and there's just buses everywhere, and there's two waves of them, and they're backed up forever. And if you just go, okay, left is this side, and right's going that side, and those going to this side of town, and those going to that side of town. And you're just gonna get them out quicker, because like you said, you've got these kids in the sandlot that effectively, you know, are trying to come back up to go through, you know, this area of the parking lot as is. So that's where you get this, just, just, it's not gonna end well.
Yeah, and I have no idea like what the, I'm sure there's certain rules that happen on public roads that Kyle Fox would say, hey, you can never switch the directions, or it's, you know, it's hard to say, I don't know, it's way, it's not what I do, it's not what I know about, but it sounds like obviously we would go through and get all of that information. And I'm super excited to see the tennis courts, because I've just, really has bothered me ever since I've been on the school board and before, that we don't have tennis courts at our high school for our kids that play tennis, and they have to go all the way to Wasserman Park. And for our community, people that would like to play tennis, you could have, you have people that live on the north side of town that would like to play tennis and use the facilities, and they would, they have to go all the way to Wasserman Park, which is almost Tenatchua, really.
I go to Bedford.
Or Bedford, right?
Yeah, I do.
So that's really optimistic. So yeah, those were just a couple of my thoughts regarding it. It sounds like then what you would need from us is the funding for the study.
That's, so yes, this is what the planning and building committee is presenting to tonight is, as Rich so well said. And Matt, you know, a scheme, a conceptual framework. And then asking the board to consider, you know, whether or not it would appear as a study in the budget. So yes, that's the request.
Okay, but thanks again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Cindy.
Andy? Deferring, Brandy?
So as part of this, I'm assuming that there will be discussions surrounding the existing buildings that are there and use of those. So what is currently central office? Is that going to be part of what the engineers speak to and what will cost, what costs will be involved with renovating those buildings as well? Or are we talking about demoing them? What, what are we looking at there?
So I would just say, so what I, what I have appreciated about what the planning and building committee is proposing is again, like trying to get a helicopter view of everything. And absolutely what would happen with the existing superintendent's office? The existing student services office, the Brentwood building, all of that, what's to be done with them? And then what's to do with them after we've done something to them is all part of what's the proposal for this plan. So again, as to Rich's point, it's not about, you know, kind of taking one thing at a time and deciding to do that. And then realizing, oh, if only we thought of this, then we couldn't, but now we've got it, so we can't. So yes, all of that is included.
Okay. Is there anywhere on here that a turf field might be able to be located at all behind? No, okay. An additional small little field? No.
No, sorry.
So I've been, was it my turn? So I've been sort of sitting in the background, letting everybody talk. But I've been the liaison into this committee for what, five years now, five or six years? One of the things we learned is that trying to put a building up with no plan around it is like, it's never going to fly. And I think we learned a lot by watching the town do their garage. That having a plan for the whole area, including using the old structure and everything like that, was something that we could learn from. I mean, there's the touch a truck and all that, but the way that they approached it and they were successful was important. So I've been pushing the committee and the committee is now doing to take a step back. I mean, I, I took a lot of heat from the community since I was the advocate for purchasing the Brentwood facility. And the land is, as Rich has said and as Matt has said, the land is the most important part. Because how often do you get land that's right there? It gives us more options. It's got a piece of garbage building on it. We thought we might be able to use it. We know we can't, which is why there's a request to budget the money to tear it down at the beginning. So that we can remove the, the sort of, you know, the cost, the ongoing cost. Because it's not suitable to use as part of the long-term plan. But the real most important thing is to have somebody that does this for a living, planning this, come in with no preconceived notion of where a building is. Right now, if you took, if you did a Google map and you looked at the whole outline of everything the school district owns from Brentwood, the area behind where the tennis courts are, are, is a wooded area that we own that adjuts, joins the back of the Master Cola Elementary Field. Then we own things on the other side of the, of O'Gara Drive. We own that whole area without, let's assume there's no buildings on it at all. Where's the optimal place to put a central office building with room to expand? If you put it too close to where Brentwood is now, you've got the infringement on the edge of the property on the backside. So that's got to be taken into account. Does Brentwood, Brentwood Drive even need to be there? Because it's only like, got two buildings on it, right? It's the, the blue building and the red building are on it. So the idea is to take a step back with a clean slate, say what can be done. Now, you asked the question about a turf field. What's interesting is, is that if you were to take a step back and the planning will show this. There's land, but the amount of land you'd need to do something that size doesn't really exist within that section. You can theoretically put something like a tennis court, which is why they proposed putting them there. Because that area, that wooded area was one of the proposals for an SAU building at one point. It's a good size for a tennis court, not so much for a field. You need to be careful working on the other side of O'Gara where all the parking is now. Because the state is going to be coming through in a few years and redoing the whole highway with walls and stuff. So you don't really want to do anything on that side yet. So I think the turf field part might not work, but there's other options besides tennis that could work. We don't know. So the idea, again, the idea is blank slate. Budget the money in when we have our budget discussions soon to have the proper planning done. To look at the soils, to look at the flows, to bring all those engineering things together. So that we've got a plan that we can test, we can explain to the residents and the voters, we can explain to ourselves. And that potentially we could put a phase process together to do it. You know, build the building. What do you do with the other existing buildings? Where do you put the parking? What do you think needs to be done at once? What from a bond perspective makes sense to do? When, do you do the tennis courts right up front? There's a million questions. But the proposal is, and I think, you know, to Rich's point, budget for the money to plan. Budget for the money to take down Brentwood. And then let's, let's have this discussion and give us enough time till April twenty-twenty-one to do the right thing and present it and get the buy-in from the voters in town. Because that is ultimately what we want to do.
There is some prejudice with this, I agree. If I came in here and I flew in from, you know, Utah and said, well, give me this idea to do. To Brandy's point, the prejudice is the red building is a goner. Matt has done enough meetings on that, that, that I feel very confident in a central office does fit in there, you know. You move it off the property. It does, if you notice, however, maybe we can turn the green building into storage of some kind. Minimal heat, that type of thing. Well, then you take the future parking out, but the rest of this can still stay intact. The blue building has some bad issues in the basement. I'm not optimistic on that one, but maybe they can do something and rehab it. You know, so you lose a little bit of parking on the top. So there is a little bit of prejudice in that. We believe the red is gone. We don't know about the green and the blue and any possible rehabilitation. But that kind of addresses what her point was, I agree.
But the point is, just to finish the thought, the red building, the red building does not necessarily have to be the exact location of a new building. It could be around the corner, it could be where that parking is, right there, closer to the tennis courts. And turn the red building more into parking if there's more expansion space. So we're just, we're spitballing ideas, which is great. But you need to hire somebody that's their job to optimize the space, optimize the flow. And that's the point of what we're talking about here, I think.
I mean, the tennis courts won't fit where the red building is, but the red building will fit where the tennis courts could.
What I'm saying is the parking, if you look at where the parking is, that parking with the central office, you could skew it. Make sure there's plenty of room and move more parking to the central offices.
Oh, yeah.
See what I mean? But see, that those, don't, don't stick to what the picture is. Stick to the fact you can put a lot of stuff in this land area, right?
Cindy?
Yeah, and I think waiting till we have it, you know, when we have enough time to get it done right is one thing. But it's also when our district is closer or to being dead free, where our existing bonds.
You're hitting all my notes, on my sheets.
Which is just really the best thing, I think, for our taxpayers.
Like I said, I've been on this ten years to come before you and say, no, don't do it. You know, I am a taxpayer, so I appreciate that end of it too. But I also understand what these people are working in, it's unacceptable.
Right, right.
So you got, you got a little less debt, super.
Yeah, we're all in that together.
Yep, absolutely.
The other thing is community education. So I would say that's always something I think we need to think about is if we can eventually use one of those other houses for community education or, yeah.
Well, plus educating the community about what it is we're doing too.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm talking about what do we, adult learning, adult education.
Right.
When this finally gets, gets done and there will be, we will have, as they did, you know, touch a trucker, go, go to, we will have open house superintendents. Absolutely, you know, two weekends or whatever we have, so people can go through that thing. Again, that's kind of what I thought you were leaning to, but I understand the community education too, so.
Brandy?
To what I thought Cindy was saying, I, I would like to, when and if this moves forward. I think after everything I learned from the whole turf field experience, it really boils down to being as open and transparent as to what the plans are. And giving opportunities for feedback prior to. So if we could focus like a huge communication effort surrounding exactly what we're doing and why and when and how and where. I think we'll get more support as time progresses, which I think is, is huge and obviously very important.
Andy?
Just to follow on that thought, one of the things that we learned from the last time we put this up for a vote, which was what? Seven years ago, six, six years ago, something like that? We did market it well. But the other problem was what we had to market wasn't a well thought out overarching plan. Which is why you take a step back, you look at the big plan. And at the same time, you sort of market and promote as you go through. So I think we've learned and we've watched the town, so I think that's, that's the whole approach. So what I'm going to make sure from a board's perspective is that I, that I try to make sure that the funding is in place in our budget discussions to be able to support this. So that we can start to do the work and the planning as soon as we can, so.
Matthew?
Yeah, just because I'm getting really kind of excited about the, you know, the, you know, the process of looking at this holistically. Cindy mentioned parking, student parking in the dirt lots and on the glacial till and on the hills and everything like that. Sometimes I wish I could get my truck and join them because it looks kind of creative. But if I put a sidewalk per the request of the planning, the town center committee, which we want to do, that's going to cut that parking off. So we have to look at additional parking. So there's going to be a lot of inputs into this. And I think, you know, because I have a plan in front of me, which, which John was, when he was assistant principal at Master Cola Elementary School, helped develop for the back parking lot of MES that shows another hundred spaces across the street. So that can be a little nugget that could be slid in there. Oh, by the way, we have this from two thousand four. What do you think of this? And anything you do, I don't think we want to sit in a room and just grind it out with like four engineers and just present it to the board and go ta-da. I think what we want to do is to have the engineers and the civil, civil engineers come before you and find out what's on your mind, what's your vision, what do you want to see? And have them take those inputs from here or public participation at those meetings and go back to the drawing board and come back a few times during the course of the entire year to keep you guys informed, to keep the public informed and to generate a little, you know, bit of excitement about what can be. Because we're just not talking about a superintendent's office. We're talking about a community asset that I could, I can really kind of vision as being a little nugget in this community over here. Where people congregate, where people walk, where people talk with one another. Where people sit down on a bench that we could have with a couple of trees there in a nice spot and relax. You know, you see it on the weekend right now, all the time. You see it after hours, you see it everywhere. But I think it would be really nice to have the process out in the open, like Brandy mentioned. Have them come here, have you guys discuss, get public input and have all that stuff brought together. In a couple of options or two or three. But have it done all out in the open.
Brandy?
I love that and I'm in full support of that. I, the only thing that, so I, I really have this thing with safety. And as you guys are walking through that process with the engineers, the one thing that I, as much as I love the idea of having an open community and, and having, you know, the bench that you're referencing with tennis courts and, and, you know, the community being there in school hours. I just would want to keep safety top of mind and ensure that while the engineers are drafting what they think might meet our needs best, that they also take safety as, you know, the highest priority for our students in that area. So that the flow of people in the community itself isn't right on top of our schools. And you know what I mean? Just to throw that out there to the engineers as they're starting the process, I'd rather say it in the beginning than mid-process, so.
I mean, the planning and building committee, I mean, this isn't like, oh, well, okay, well, we'll hand this over to, you know, XYZ engineering firm. Planning and building committee has always worked with every possible building that's ever been built here. And input from the committees, from the school board, from the, from the public. We want public support, public input, that's the right word. So it's not just, you know, our work honestly has just begun. And, you know, when these people come in and they start going, whoa, this and this and this, like you said, from, you know, they're going to be looking at this plan. Not this. And okay, well, what about this and what about that? We've got safety, we've got parking. We love this idea of tennis courts, every one of us, you know, I'd play tennis more. So we'll be very involved, but it will be, you know, it's not, they're just not going to come in here as, as has done in some projects that require that. Hey, here's our, boom, 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 oh, great, here. This will be a long process, but fun.
Okay, there, I did have a couple of things I wanted to weigh in on as well. As you're looking at, you're saying you don't want to touch the faculty lot and that, that parcel along the ever. I understand the motivation of that. But I've always thought that, well, I've, I've always thought that we did have to relocate the tennis courts. The one thing I don't like about where that is, I want that to be parking in my head. Because I'd rather have the tennis courts closer to the school itself, closer to the locker rooms, the facilities, the plumbing, all of the things that our other teams would have access to. So I look at that, that faculty lot, I look at the greenery between the end of that faculty lot to where the track comes at the end of the school as possible usable space. So in that we haven't actually used and maybe we just reconfigure it to a way. But that keeps our players closer to our facilities. So going all the way down to, and I'm using my hands, but all the way down to the end of O'Gara. Or even all the way through a parking lot to go across parking lot to get to tennis courts, to me, is again, not what I would call my, my, my instinctual logic. And I will say, you're going to have to take those three trees out unless you're going to have a shed for brooms. Because as a tennis player, I used to have to sweep all the time the foliage that was around the courts when I had to play. And that, that takes away from your match time. So just, just my two cents as a former, you know, competitive player.
See, and that's, that's the, that's the type of input that'll come out. You just illustrated perfectly how you can look at that area, like Andy and Rich said, as a blank canvas. And you can, one of my favorite toys when I, when I was a kid was Mr. Potato Head. You could start off with a blank Mr. Potato Head. And then you could put the ears where you wanted to and everything like that. You can do that here, but this is a much more complex with far reaching. Everything has a certain, whatever you do here is going to affect this. And whatever you do here is going to affect this. So that's why, that's the beauty of everything. You can look at it as clean and then you could make it what it probably would have been if the time and energy and the community planned, but they couldn't, they didn't have that luxury because the community was growing fast. You look at the buildings, you look at the number of additions that are on that high school since it was first put up back in the early seventies. It's like six or seven additions on that high school. So it's not because anybody was lacking in vision. It's just that the population came so quickly and rapidly that the most efficient way to deal with it was addition after addition. And so now we have a time to take a breath.
And it definitely is our right time based on, you know, what we saw for enrollment's first day. But that's the, it's not the end, it's going to come back through based on the development that's already coming through now. So you're right, this is, this is our, this is our sweet spot of time. To that, I do agree that in engineering study, that would just, again, take a blank slate and not preconceive an idea is exactly what's needed. The other thing I think is very important is we need, and we keep talking about communication, we talk about transparency, we talk about buy-in from the community. And I'm just going to go back to an old, you know, an old song that we play. And that is, I think the planning and building committee meetings need to be in an arena that can be recorded and televised. Because right now, it's in a, it's in a conference room in a high school that is, you know, not well populated at the times that you meet. And I think it's. And I think it's, it's a strong indicator that it's difficult to engage in a conference room, you know, with what I would call, you know, I guess, a not regularity of meetings. So it's not the first Monday of every month like, like our meetings are. We're kind of a standing appointment. So on that note, if, with regularity and consistency of meeting, it will also give the opportunity for the, for the community to know what to expect so that they can come to you.
The reason it hasn't been is there's only so many cameras in so many offices to do this, and that has been the primary reason. The other thing, the planning and building committee is a little unique. We have no budget, no authority, and talk about transparency, everything we do comes here. There, there's nothing that you don't know that we don't do. And I can agree to, here's a good or bad example. When we looked at where to put this new building, we completely discounted putting it next to the high school. We knew immediately that that was completely unworkable. It would cost a, a small fortune. It didn't, it was inconsistent with keeping it as a simple, you know, lower-cost project than putting it as part of a school. Well, someone made a suggestion, why don't you put it next to the school? And it cost money to do that. So, you know, there's an idea where we should have put that down. The bottom line is, everything we do comes to you. So it's not like, oh, well, we're doing this and we kind of did that. We have no budget, no authority, and everything we do gets put in front of you.
Right, but I think the input you're looking for to develop these projects is what I'm talking about. And I definitely think that.
Well, we would do, I would actually post a meeting saying, February 10th, 7:00 PM, cafeteria or something like that, open meeting, come with ideas, this is what we're looking to do. You want the tennis courts here, I want that here. What about, you know, the turf field here? What about the sidewalk here? And that would lend to that perfectly, I agree.
Mark?
I was just, I was just going to add that, you know, I think it's, what's kind of exciting about this is we can look at this as sort of a new day, both in terms of conceptual designs, but also in terms of the way that we can enhance the communication. I mean, almost everything that comes to this board has a communications component to it. And, and so I'm looking forward to taking all the ideas about ways to greater publicize and make accessible and to do what I can to, to work with folks to, to make that happen. So I'm really kind of seeing this as, in a way, day one of a, of a new way of kind of approaching a lot of, a lot of this, including those kinds of public outreach things that might be a little bit more effective than, yeah.
And Cindy, then Brandy?
I mean, along the same lines, we talked earlier at this meeting about focus groups. I mean, there's been a lot of discussion that happens about this space, but how often does it involve our students, faculty, and staff? And so as we're taking that step back, we've got people, hundreds of them, that are experts in that space and live and breathe it every day. So I would suggest that as we're bringing engineers in, we make sure that our faculty and staff have input as well as students.
I think one thing that might be helpful is if we, once we have sort of the ball rolling, maybe we could have planning and building as a standing agenda item for certain times and announce in, you know, a month before or two months before the specific dates that planning and building will be coming to the public. So that way the public comes here, and that way we can hear both planning and building as well as from the public at the same time, which might help the board fully understand both sides of the equation as we're trying to walk through this and take this holistic approach. That might be one way to streamline communication efforts as well, where if they're having a meeting and everybody's going there and then they have to come and communicate that back, if everybody's here and communicating, it might just streamline it a little bit. So just one suggestion.
Andy?
So, and that's a good lead into something I was thinking, is we've talked about the planning and building sort of leading this, but the school board has to figure out what its role is going to be through this process. Because at the end of the day, it's the school board that's putting this out. And the planning and building is going to do their due diligence with the engineers and things like that. But these ideas of having the focus groups and having other participation, I think the school board needs to be proactive in brokering a lot of that too. So one of the things that we may need to do as a board as we get closer to this is, I'm thinking of a subcommittee, but that's not right. But the, the board may need to lead some sort of a, of a group that sort of likely, we've looked at other things like the communication committee, something around the building that we work to help provide information into planning and building that we're driving with the community and staff and things like that. So I think it's something that we just need to consider as we get closer.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing them, more to come. So we will look toward budget season to look to author a study.
Just one really thing really quick. So Matt, the numbers that we need for the budget, do you have both sets of figures that you're prepared to share with the board of what you think an engineering study would be and the teardown cost for those? I don't want you to say, I just want to know that.
We will have that, we will firm that up now that we know where you want to go in that direction. We have a general idea right now, but I would like some time to put that together.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Okay, thank you so much for coming. And now we're on to a laptop swap. And we will let John, Adam, and Bill settle in. But item number five is the opportunity to enhance support for UDL implementation. So we will be letting Mark introduce the group and the topic.
So I'll just say, this is actually, couldn't in a way be a better segue to have Rich and then, and then Bill and, and John and Adam, because what they're going to talk about is you've heard now for several weeks, I think the board asked for periodic updates about universal design for learning, and we've tried to provide you that. But the thing that's really important is design. And one of the things that we just shared with you was this notion that really is, remember, you heard at a previous presentation that the beginning of UDL came from architecture in a way, came from how do you design maximally a space so that it can be used for, you know, many people for different purposes? And we've, and they developed this idea for education, and then we've really begun to adopt it. So the idea of universally designing the space is really not inconsistent with anything that they've been, that we've been trying to talk about, about academics and, and instruction. And so there's a parallel here. So I try to point out at times when, you know, things seem like they're, like they're very different and they're based in different places, I try to draw connections that what we're doing with UDL in the classroom has also informed how we're beginning to try to approach processes and things like this. It's the same thing, big picture, what are the barriers? What are the ways that you can, you know, address and overcome the barriers? That's what we talk about in the classroom teaching setting. It's not at all unlike what we've just, we're trying to do here. So even if it doesn't seem like they're parallels, they're kind of ours. So that's a good segue because we have Bill Wilmot and Adam Carragher and John. So welcome, Bill, thanks for coming here tonight, appreciate it.
So I just, I'll begin. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. I was going to reference a very similar thing too. We talk about, the fact is that, I, I think when we just saw the, the fact that we looked over and we saw Rich turn that paper over and see that, and he said, we'll be looking at this blank slate. And I think a lot of times you need to begin there and say, what are, what are the options we have to hit all the learners and all the people and all the public and everyone in what we're trying to do? So I thank you, Mark, for your intro because it was right on where I wanted to go. As part of our ongoing efforts in informing both the board and the public about universal design for learning, or UDL, tonight I invite Bill Wilmot. And he is our facilitator in Merrimack and a member of our, of the New Hampshire UDL implementation team. And also along with him, you have Adam Carragher, the principal of the middle school. And, and tonight we're going to talk about a little, a little bit more about last week, you heard from both Nicole Diggins and from James Costa about kind of, what does it look like in UDL in the classroom? And what are we doing for efforts with teachers? Well, Adam, tonight we'll paint a little picture about kind of what is an administrator and the focus of the building and where they're going. And then Bill will talk about an opportunity we have to really take our middle school and move it forward and really kind of fully implement and dive into UDL as a community at the middle school, so.
Excellent, thank you very much. So thank you all for having us here tonight. It is very exciting, you know. Nicole and James painted such an amazing picture of, of UDL and, and what it is and how they're working to implement it. And one of the things that, that has just been a real neat experience over the past year since we've been engaged in this with Bill and Cast as a cohort at the middle school and the upper elementary school, is just really been, just the fact that it's a learning experience and it's constant. And, you know, we're sitting back there and we're listening to the conversation that's happening. And, you know, Andy, you're talking about the refinements that you make. And, you know, the reality of it is, is, you know, and this is really what, what I think is just really kind of pulled, universal design for learning has pulled out of me has been, you know, I'm, I'm a sports fan and I love baseball. And baseball is a sport where improvement is constant, okay? People are making millions of dollars successfully batting one out of every three times they go up to the plate. They can hit the ball once every three times, and they're getting paid millions of dollars. But they get paid millions of dollars because they realize that there are always things and ways to continue improving. And that's what this is really about. It's about continuing to think about the students that you have in front of you, continuing to try to understand better how you can design something to meet their multi-different needs so that the barriers for learning and for understanding are not, are not there. So just like the professional baseball player, you know, and I've, I've, I've really pitched this idea, sorry, pardon the pun, pitched this idea to the, the middle school staff, is, is the idea that, you know what? We have to be those, those, you know, those professional ballplayers who are out there and they're hitting the ball over and over and over. It doesn't matter how good or how great or any of that, because they know how to be better. Every one of them. They wouldn't keep practicing if they didn't know how to be better. And that's going to, that's a life pursuit. And, and hopefully a life pursuit that when we talk about lifelong learning and, and developing this in, in our kids and in our students, that's what, we need to be the examples. You know, I know our, our last UDL meeting, we had one relatively recently and, and, and we started talking and actually, Bill, it was the one, the, the workshop piece that you were leading, where we were talking about the different places where you can apply it. And all of a sudden it just, you know, you're just sitting there thinking, boy, we could talk about, how are we going to do parent nights differently? How are we going to do this differently in order to help and to provide the most optimal experience for the people who are going to be there? How do I run faculty meetings more efficiently? How do I do all of this stuff? Because it's me too. It's everything. And, and if you design it properly and you design it right, you're going to be able to meet the needs of, of, of the people. So it's really exciting to me, and I'm going to kind of pass it over to Bill here because he's going to talk a little bit about this potential opportunity, so. Bill?
Thank you, Adam. I, it's rare that you, when you're a teacher, you get to see your student make an impassioned plea for the thing that you've helped teach them. Thank you, Adam, for that impassioned plea. I'm not the only teacher. So this opportunity came along very recently. The Chan Zuckerberg Initiative is the foundation created by Mark Zuckerberg of Facebook fame. And they have a grant program called the Effective School Practices to support the whole child. And Cast was applying for this grant and looking for middle schools to partner with. And we wanted to partner with somebody in, as, that was a part of our New Hampshire project. And so we reached out to John and Mark and Adam to think about whether Merrimack Middle School would be a potential partner for this. It was, the grant is specifically for a middle school. So we have, we've put the grant together with a partner in Michigan and Merrimack Middle School as a partner pending your approval of the, the application. So I'll, I want to give a little bit of context about the New Hampshire UDL work and then talk a little bit about what this would look like, why, why Chan Zuckerberg is interested in this, why Cast is interested in this, and why I think Merrimack, why this could be good for Merrimack. Just brief introductions to, to the two people up there who are not in the room, Jamie Basham and Steve Nordmark. Jamie's the senior director of learning and innovation at Cast. He's actually based in Kansas. He's a professor at Kansas, University of Kansas, and works part-time at Cast. And then Steve Nordmark is based in Ohio and is the director of business development at Cast. For this project, Jamie would be the principal researcher, and Steve would be working with him as well. One of the things that they have designed is a, it's called Learning Design. It's an online platform for teachers to learn from each other about universal design for learning. And it provides resources and support for ongoing implementation. So access to all of that would be a, a part of this. I'll get into that in a second. So the New Hampshire UDL Innovation Network is in its third year. Year two was last year, Merrimack Middle School and Master Cola Upper Elementary participated. This year we have a team in every school in Merrimack, and we have a district team. And it, Merrimack's the only district where we have a team in every school and a district team looking at the whole picture. There are a couple of other smaller districts that have teams from every school. Here's a map of what it looks like now, of schools implementing UDL across the state from the north to the, to further south. And here we are. There are 7.6 people per these UDL teams. Merrimack has unusually large teams, especially the high school has a massive team. Signed up a lot of people. There are 63 of these UDL teams across the state. There are seven Merrimack UDL teams. They're representing 68 schools, so there's some schools that have partnered together to create teams. 480 educators across the state are participating in the network. 75 Merrimack educators. And so Merrimack educators represent 16% of the teachers participating across the state. As those educators go out and share with their colleagues, they're sharing with 1,800 colleagues in all of these schools, and those colleagues, those teachers are touching 21,000 learners. So we are really getting to this scale where we're having, having an impact across the state. And it's pretty exciting when we get together for the fall network meeting and we have 300 teachers all together. So the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative, this, they're just quotes from their, from this particular grant, is committed to ensuring every young person enters adulthood with the skills and abilities they need to reach their full potential. And each teacher is equipped with the mindsets, tools, and practices they need to support their students' learning and development. That's their main priority. The way they see doing that are, one, identifying and improving school practices by leveraging the science of learning and human development, and two, leveraging various ways to integrate research and practice to accelerate the application of adolescent development knowledge to design and practice of learning environments. I put all of that up there, I apologize for reading it. This touches on kind of a core part of what Cast is all about, which is connecting research about learning to what actually happens in the classroom. Cast is a research and development and a professional learning organization. We have both of those sides to us, which is kind of rare. UDL is really a summary, the UDL guidelines are a summary of research in the learning sciences and how those can be effectively implemented in, in the classroom. The, we believe that when you implement UDL, it will result in greater curiosity and self-direction. And we also think that Merrimack Middle School is kind of perfectly positioned to take advantage of this research and this grant opportunity because they have been working in a small team for about a year, and they're just now beginning to think about not only how to expand that team, but how to share that with the rest of the, the rest of the school. And as Adam said, even think about beyond the classroom. What are the implications for UDL beyond the classroom? So what would Merrimack Middle School get out of this? Merrimack, uh, Middle School would get fifty thousand dollars over two years to support UDL implementation. The way that that, uh, is used is very flexible. We wrote it in the grant to be as flexible as possible. So anything that can be reasonably, uh, argued supports UDL implementation, uh, could be funded with this. So things like, uh, hiring subs to free up teachers to participate in a variety of activities, creating summer stipends, even creating, uh, part-time positions or stipended positions. Uh, or other things that, that, um, uh, Adam and John and Mark can dream up. Uh, in addition to the money, uh, there will be additional resources and support from, from across CAST. Um, I have been and will continue to be the, the primary contact and support person from CAST for, for UDL implementation. Uh, but this kind of opens up the possibility of, of, uh, gathering more people in to help support that effort. This is a research project, um, looking specifically at the question of, uh, does this increase curiosity and, and self-direction among students? Uh, so as that research is, um, data is gathered, uh, all of that will be available to Merrimack Middle School, uh, fed back to them to, uh, enhance the implementation efforts, uh, at the school. And finally, the, I mentioned the Learning Design Platform. One piece of the Learning Design Platform is, uh, individual, uh, credentialing around UDL. So teachers can become credentialed as, uh, Associate Core and Practitioner Level Credentials, uh, in UDL. Uh, so, uh, teachers at Merrimack Middle School would, uh, have access to that. That's something normally, um, schools or teachers would have to pay for. Uh, and then the school certification process, which is currently in development. Also part of that, uh, platform, uh, allows a school to become, it, it's kind of another architecture comparison. It's often compared to the LEED certification, uh, process for an arc, for, for a building. It, uh, would allow schools to apply for, uh, a certification process to become a UDL certified, uh, school at various levels. Uh, so, uh, the middle school would have, uh, access to that as well. So those would be the major benefits from, uh, for the school. I'll talk just briefly about the, the research. The, uh, the primary research question is what is the impact of UDL on student curiosity and self-direction? Those are chosen, um, one, because they're interesting and important. And, uh, two, because that's a major, uh, kind of central way that the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative defines, um, their outcomes for the whole child are around, uh, curiosity and self-direction. Uh, this would include, um, research, uh, surveys, uh, directly taken by the students. The Materi, uh, Self-Directed Learner Inventory, the Curiosity Observation Scale, uh, the Measure of Student Engagement and the Social Emotional Learning Practice Inventory, uh, would all be used. The first three, uh, I believe are, uh, are developed by this, uh, organization Materi, uh, that does, uh, this kind of work and has worked with Chan Zuckerberg, uh, Initiative before, uh, around self-directed learning. Materi, uh, uh, all of that data is centralized to that, uh, uh, organization. It's stored on a private server, uh, that they, uh, have, uh, the server secure. Once the students take, uh, a survey, the student data is not individually identifiable. So it's, it's anonymized at the point when they, uh, take that survey. So that's, that's the major overview of, uh, the grant opportunity. Happy to answer any, uh, any questions. Oh, um, the, uh, the next step, so we don't even know that we've gotten this yet. So fifty thousand dollars if we get it. The next step are, uh, interviews that would happen in October and November. Uh, the, there would be then notification at, uh, the end of November and the earliest start date would be a January, uh, twenty-twenty start date.
John?
I think Bill did a nice overview of kind of his role in Merrimack and he didn't do it a little bit of justice. So I'm going to continue to kind of just talk a little more about Bill's involvement and his dedication to the district where we are right now. What Bill didn't mention is that he's on, um, a Zoom call each month with, um, every one of us, uh, leaders of each of those seven teams. He, um, attends our, um, our leadership meeting for an hour via Zoom once a month. He also is onsite for, um, our instructional rounds, we call them, which is an opportunity for onsite coaching once a month in the district. That's seven times in a month, just to put the math to that. So, uh, Bill, um, I already offered him an office and he hasn't accepted yet, but, um, he may and, uh, he's also here tonight, which I thank him for coming.
Well, based on the planning and building presentation, I know why you declined.
But, um, thank you again. And, uh, where we are is, um, you know, please, um, ask any questions that you have. And if there's things we don't have here tonight that you need from us, uh, certainly Bill, Adam and I will work on getting them for you.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, absolutely, Mark.
Yeah, just, just, uh, just to be clear, so we're, uh, asking the board to, um, uh, place us on the consent agenda for two weeks from now. And if during that time, uh, you have any questions or more specific information that you need from, from Bill or John or Adam that would help you to better, uh, understand what's, what this is about or to help you make a decision. Just reach out to me and then we'll provide that, um, to you. So not asking for a decision tonight.
Thank you, Mark. Andy?
So, given the fact that students are going to be surveyed, what's the parental consent that's going to be done for this? And is there a all-in, all or no, I mean, is there? Struggling with the way to answer the question.
You're asking if, if, um, there, is there a point at which not enough people will sign up that will make it not helpful to Bill or?
Correct. Thank you.
Uh, it, it helps that the school is large, um, and that, uh, you know, we could get even, ten percent, I think, could, would probably be meaningful. Um, that's really more of a question that I should take back to the researchers to, to understand what they would be looking for. Um, and I can get you a better answer on that.
Right. Cause I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of scrutiny that, that parents have around, um, whenever the student's involved in the survey, even though it's not personally identifiable. Because it's, it's not really academic. It is, but it's not, uh, required for what they're doing. Is to gain data from the research, you've got to be able to, to, parents have to, is it going to be opt-out or opt-in? I can't remember which approach it is.
So.
I'm sorry, right now, well, the practice we've been doing is opting in.
Opting in, right. Which means that parents will explicitly need to say, yes, my child can participate. So, uh, understanding that that may give you a number that's certainly not a hundred percent. I'm not sure what the percent would be. So if there's a threshold that there is, it'd be good to understand that.
So, uh, what, did you ever hear that, Brendan? Okay, no. Everyone else? Good. Uh, send it.
Just to comment, I think this is really great stuff, um, to be able to get resources to help our kids and our, our faculty and staff. I'm very supportive of that. So, thank you, thank you.
And I just want to follow on that to say that we as a district have committed to UDL. We're excited about what it brings to the table. And if we can facilitate, um, more aggressively, um, tho- those skills and practices in our district based on having this grant available to us. You know, you know, far be it for us to say, we want you to do this, but we're going to tie your hands on getting it done. So, and to, and we would not deny money offered to us to, to help facilitate what our end goal is anyway. So, to me, this is a no-brainer based on everything we've talked about the last month and a half. That this is exactly, um, the right, the right opportunity at the right time. And, you know, we're not about looking gift horses in the mouth. So, definitely, this is all looking very good. But if there, again, if there are questions of Mark on what this, um, what this research entails um, and how we would use that, those funds and all of that, then, you know, definitely reach out to him. If it's, you know, something where you feel like a, a deeper discussion, we could always take it off consent and just, you know, with the idea that if we do take it off consent, we would want to still try to vote on it that night, uh, on the twenty-first. But, uh, we definitely want to keep things moving forward because this is something that's going to empower our, our educators to, to meet those educational outcomes we've been, we've been going them on. So. So thank you. Yes.
Of course.
So I just, I'd like to just sense Bill is here. I, I just want to take an opportunity to thank him. He also was our facilitator, um, at our August Academy. And, um, really was instrumental in helping to launch and get buy-in from our schools, um, for this. And it takes, um, more than a little persuading to have, um, anybody in whatever profession to consider, you know, different ways of doing things. It's not as easy as it might seem to say, do it. You have to really, um, provide people with the rationale and then the roadmap for doing it. And so I really want to compliment Bill for his, um, leadership in getting, um, people to that point. And John certainly from the beginning has been the key person for, um, bringing this in to our district and Adam and all of our principals, um, because they have really stepped up and they have taken the challenge to, um, to really see what we can do to continue to up our game. And I love, um, Adam's analogy about, about, you know, baseball. It's, um, what people in the district are telling us is they're ready to keep practicing. And for people out there who get frustrated because we, you know, um, you know, strike out every once in a while, um, that isn't the same thing as we're not trying and practicing. And so I really want to thank the, um, the leadership team as well because they have really, really accepted the challenge. So don't often get a chance to, you know, have people around who've been so instrumental. So I really want to thank, uh, you, Bill and CAST, um, for their work. And what I know is going to be sustained work over time. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're on to item number six, which is information about school rankings and I will turn it over to Mark. We're moving. We're, we're plugging back in. It looks like. There you are. Thank you. It is. And we have light on one of them.
Thank you. So, um, I'm, I'm not shy to admit to a bit of a strategy for, uh, tonight and for the last couple of, um, uh, board meetings. Um, I tried to communicate to the board and the community. Back at our first meeting, I think it was in July, that, um, I, I really want to try very hard to tackle things head-on. And to address things that I think are areas for improvement, that the board has pointed out are areas for improvement. And that the community, um, feels are areas for improvement. And, um, and so, um, I don't think there's any gain in, um, in singing a song that, you know, everything is awesome and there's nothing to fix and, you know, no problem here. That's not reality in any situation and it's not reality, um, in our school district or in any school for that matter. It's just not. So I think it's fair to own those things and to say them. Uh, and then to let the community, um, and the school board know what we're trying to do about them. But at the same time, I think it's also fair to say that as much as we're going to own some things, I also think it's important to be candid and honest about assumptions that are sometimes made that are not accurate. So for, uh, the lack of a better way to say it, I'll take the heat when the heat is justified. And when I think there's a little bit more to the story, I'm going to share that too. And I'm going to expect that people will allow that to happen. So, um, the issue of graduation rates has been, uh, an, a concern of ours and concern of the boards and certainly, uh, reasonable and very, uh, understandable concern, uh, from some people in the community. And they express that in different ways. So when Mrs. Putney came several weeks ago, um, the goal was not to say, we don't, you know, have a problem or we don't think there's any way to fix it, but it was to say, we acknowledge, but understand how graduation rates are calculated. It's not quite as simple as if you have an eighty-seven percent graduation rate, that must mean we have a thirteen percent dropout rate. I think what Mrs. Putney was able to share with you is the way that those things are, those rates are calculated, um, can be misleading. So you need to know the rest of the story. And, and so she tried to provide the rest of the story. We still have an issue with some students dropping out. That is no question. And we have to do better about that. But we don't have thirteen percent of students dropping out. That is not the equation. So, and yet, uh, without more of the backstory, people might assume that. And I'm perfectly fine with people wanting us to fix the eighty-seven percent graduation rate, but I want them to know how that's calculated. So likewise, the issue of school rankings has come up as well. And I think it's fair because we're asking the taxpayer to support a school district, um, very significant budget. And there are some, and I understand it, who'd say, well, we're so-so in this ranking and we're so-so in that ranking. So why would it be that I'd support your budget, um, when, um, you're kind of doing so-so? I agree. Absolutely, I agree. And so, um, I have really tried to do some work and some investigating to learn, well, what is it that constitutes a school ranking? How does that number get developed? That's the detail that isn't often shared when people, uh, bring up the issue of school rankings. They just say a number and then, and then sometimes let that number sit and percolate and hope that it suggests something maybe not so great. And I would just say, I respect these school rankings. I recognize them. They're from valid sources. But there's a little more to the story. So that's my goal for you tonight. So the two, um, most widely known and, uh, publicized and most frequently cited school rankings come from US News and World Report and NISH. I think it's important to say that context matters. So just pay attention to this for a minute. In, um, two thousand and eighteen, so last year, seven of the ten top schools in the country, top high schools in the country, according to US News and World Report, were charter schools. In twenty nineteen, just one year later, seven of the ten were from traditional public schools. Most of them were magnet schools and three were charters. They were traditional public schools. So then the question is, what changed? Last year's number one school dropped to number three this year. This year's number one school didn't even make last year's top ten list at all. And last year's number ten school, a magnet school for science and tech, jumped six places in one year. So the question then is begged. From year to year, is there that much fluctuation between a school that's considered awesome and a school that didn't even make the list the year before? And so then the question is, how did that happen? How do these rankings get calculated? And the answer has to do with methodology. The methodology changed. In twenty eighteen, so just last year and in all the years prior, high schools were ranked on something called the College Readiness Index, which is entirely a measure of, um, students' performance and participation by high school seniors only on AP and International Baccalaureate exams. So one hundred percent of rankings were based on standardized tests. Now, that's, I'm not suggesting that's good or bad. I'm simply saying, I don't know if everybody knows that. And for people that worry that we teach to the test or that schools are forced to teach to the test, that raises an interesting question. If your focus is on AP and International Baccalaureate to the exclusion of other kinds of instruction and other kinds of assessment, well, then you could assume a certain kind of result. I am not providing a defense of any of it or an offense of any of it. I'm simply saying that is how, up until twenty eighteen, school rankings for US News and World Report were calculated. that is how, up until 2018, school rankings for U.S. News and World Report were calculated. So the 2018 best schools had the highest participation and achievement rate on two standardized tests of all other schools. That's simply the fact. In 2019, and I apologize because this is, it was much bigger on my computer than I think it's appearing here, so my reluctance to read is outweighed by the fact that I don't know, you can see it, or people at home. So I will just say, the 29 methodology changed. So that answers the question, how could one year be so different from another? So the 2019 methodology changed. So in 2018, using the AP and international baccalaureate criteria, only 2,700 schools were ranked because not every school in the country, high school, has an international baccalaureate program, ourselves included. In 2019, more than 16,000 high schools were ranked. So now you're comparing against a much broader population of high schools. I think it's important to know where does the data come from? The data to produce the rankings does not come from high schools, but rather from third-party sources. So in other words, U.S. News and World Report and NISH, U.S. News and, I'll talk about NISH in a minute, U.S. News and World Report do not ask, you know, individual high schools, "Give us your data." They get them from third-party sources. So they are derived from things like the Common Core of Data, which is derived from the U.S. Department of Education, and it's based on enrollment, student ethnicity, and other kind of profile information. It, data also comes from statewide math and reading level assessment tests and high school graduation rates that are derived from the state departments of education. So you heard last time how graduation rates are calculated, and we'll say a little bit more about that in a minute, but those rates come from the high school. The way they're set comes from the state, the way, and so, and so that gets calculated. Advanced placement data is derived from the College Board, so we don't provide the U.S. News and World Report with participation figures or performance figures. The College Board does. And the international baccalaureate data is derived from the international baccalaureate program. In 2019, so now instead of two criteria in 2018 and in all the years before, meaning AP and international baccalaureate, now in 2019, they have, U.S. News and World Report has created six indicators for their 2019 rankings. So college readiness accounts for 30% of the total ranking, and that's based on participation rate and something called, which is 25%, and quality-adjusted participation rate, which is worth 75%. So the 25 and the 75% combined equal the 30% for college readiness score. And the participation rate is derived from the number of 12th graders in the year 2016-17, because this is 2019 data, so they would have had to come from 2016-17. The number of 12th graders in 2016-17 taking at least one AP or international baccalaureate test in their senior year divided by the total number of seniors. So if 15 students took an AP or a international baccalaureate exam, which students in Merrimack cannot because we don't have that program, that 15 would be divided by the number of total students in the graduating class, just for round numbers, 300. And then that number would equal 25% of the 30% for your college readiness score. The quality-adjusted participation rate is the number of 12th graders in 16-17 who took and passed AP, so you'd have to get above a 3, or the international baccalaureate, which you'd have to get above a 4, divided by the total number of 12th graders. So the first is just pure participation, and the second is how many of those people passed. That's the 75%. Combined with the participation, participation rate gets you the 30% that equals, that factors into your, a ranking for your score. The next indicator is, oh, so I'm sorry, let me just say, schools without an AP program or an international baccalaureate program scored a zero in this ranking. So we don't have an international baccalaureate program. Bless you. And so Merrimack High School would get a zero. So in other words, we would get half the points we could get. So if every student got even a five who took an AP exam, the highest score you could get. And even if 100% of our students did that, the most we could get is half of the total score because we don't have the other half, which is the international baccalaureate. So that's just, is what it is. But it complicates the interpretation of a school ranking a little bit, or at least it does for me. The college curriculum breadth is worth 10%. That's derived from the percentage of 12th graders who took and the percentage who passed multiple AP and IB exams. So again, if we don't have an IB exam, then we can only qualify for half of those total points. And the college curriculum breadth, as U.S. News describes it, is actually quite interesting because they make the assumption, I don't know that I have the ability to agree or disagree, that they make the assumption that success on an AP exam suggests the breadth of the curriculum opportunities that are offered to a student because they assess complicated, you know, reading and math and so on, and, and for other areas that offer AP, so in science. And so the assumption is that if you do well on an AP exam, that means you have a broad curriculum. I don't, my mind is not tonight to argue that point. Certainly have thoughts about that. But anyway, that's how that is calculated. Then math and reading proficiency, which is based on state's grading systems. Each student's score for each subject is compared against students in other schools within the state. So we have, and that's worth 20%. So we have our scores for reading and math. Claremont has its scores for reading and math, and then the two are, you know, up against all the other schools in the state. And then that is calculated at 20%. Math and reading performance, so there's math and reading proficiency and math and reading performance. Math and reading performance is also derived from math and reading state assessments, but compared to what U.S., now, listen to this for a minute, compared to what U.S. News predicted for a school with demographic, with its demographic characteristics in the state. So U.S. News and World Report calculates that for, for a district like Merrimack or like Claremont with certain demographics, that it should do this well or that well on average. So what the subheading of that says is that less racially diverse schools are expected to do better than more racially diverse schools. So if you happen to be in a district that just because of its demographics doesn't have as much racial or ethnic diversity as another community, then the expectation is that you do considerably better than those that do. There are lots and lots of things that are not calculated there, like, for instance, just merely the variance of learners and the proportion of students with a variety of learning challenges, not necessarily identified students, just human beings. But in any event, that is not taken into account. And then the final 10, then the underserved student performance is worth 10%, and that measures learning outcomes only, only among Black, Hispanic, and low-income students. And that is factored in as well, worth 10%, and the graduation rate, which is worth 10% as well. And as Mrs. Putney pointed out to you a few weeks ago, I think it's very important to say that a, this is entirely based upon students who enter their freshman year have to be the same students who complete their senior year. So in Merrimack and in many other places, what often happens is we get students who come in as sophomores. And maybe they've come and they've been quite disadvantaged in their previous school for any number of reasons, and we've got them now. And we have been able to get them up to speed, which happens, and successfully graduate as seniors three years later. So they come in as sophomores. They've had their freshman year, but in many cases, not a great experience, but we've helped them. They don't get calculated into our graduation rate because they weren't here as freshmen. So what about students who come here and have had a variety of accidents, illnesses, injuries, family crises that make it unable for them to graduate in four years? So we retain them. We support them. We graduate them in their fifth year or their sixth year. They are not calculated in our graduation rate. Now, that's true. They're not graduated, counted in anybody's graduation rate. However, that, it must be stated, I don't know if you were to ask me to provide data, well, how many students in Merrimack compare to how many students in, you know, Manchester come and stay for four years? I don't have that data for other districts, but transience and other issues are very unique to a place. That doesn't get factored in to the calculation of a school ranking. It just is. You came in as a freshman, you left as a senior, and, and there's your 10%, whatever that rate is. So NISH school rankings are, and this is right off the, so I put quotations there for a reason because it comes right off the, the NISH site, based on opinions from real parents and students on things like the college prep programs of a school, the quality of the cafeteria food, academic achievement, sports, diversity, the quality of school administration. The methodology gets very complicated, and trust me, I have edited this down unbelievably because it, you just totally get in the weeds. But for the purposes of helping people understand how this works, they're based upon response rates. So the highest response rates are considered more accurate than lower response rates. So that makes sense. If you ask a school of 500 people what they think about X, and 30 people respond out of 500, but then you publish those responses as if they reflect everything, then you've got 470 people who haven't weighed in, but the 30 carry quite a bit of weight. So NISH recognizes that the more responses you get, the better. And that's true. NISH selects each ranking's factors to reflect a school profile, but the factors themselves aren't seeming to be entirely clear. So if you were to ask me tonight, "What's a factor? Define a factor," that seems somewhat, I fully admit I may have missed it, probably did, but I couldn't pull it out from what I was researching to tell you what a factor is. And I fully own that it could have been my failure to understand it. But I would also say, you know, I mean, I can read. And so if it's not clear, then I don't know to whom it would be clear. But in any event, then they evaluate the data derived from surveys for each factor to ensure value. Then they do a Z-score, which is a distance from the average, which is produced after each factor is processed. They assign a weight for each factor. Then to ensure a fair and balanced representation of the data, they assign an overall score for each school. So there's a lot of quantitative analysis here. I'm not able to describe the validity or lack of validity of any of it. But the main takeaway here is that it's derived, I'll just say again, from the opinions of parents and students on things like these things. Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's just relevant to that point. It's, to my knowledge, they don't have a way of actually confirming who's filling out of, reporting to them if they actually are a parent or a student. It could be any person at large that goes in, and maybe their student was 10 years ago. They may not be, it may not be relevant, I guess.
I, I'm sure that if you asked that question of a representative from NISH, they would have an answer for you. So I can't, I, I can't say what they would say, but what you said appears to be accurate.
I mean, just common sense would tell me there's no way to verify that without actually coming to the school and getting that verification, of which they're not, we know they're not doing that.
I think that would be an accurate conclusion. So I also think that it's important to understand the data sources that NISH uses. So remember, they're, they're looking for opinions about things like academic achievement, the quality of food, sports, diversity, quality of school administration. But embedded in that are other kinds of pieces of information. And those pieces of information come from, and I'll just read these because it's small, the United States Department of Education, the Private School Universe Survey, the Common Core Data, which is derived from the National Center for Education Statistics, School Attendance Boundary Survey, NISH K-12 Student and Parents Surveys, American Community Survey from the United States Census Bureau, Uniformed Crime Report that comes from the FBI for communities, National Climatic, Climac, Climatic Data Center from the National Oceanographic Administration, Topologically Integrated Geographical Encoding and Referencing, which is something called Tiger, County Business Patterns, U.S. Census, ZIP Code Patterns, ZIP Code Business Patterns that come from the U.S. Census, Food Environmental, Environment Atlas from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Volunteering and Civic Life in America, Corporation for National and Community Service, Open Street Map. And oftentimes, what happens is, it appears that real, realtors use this to sort of promote properties or towns with particular value. And so there is a connection there as well. So you click on a school, I'm going to move, I click on, and then, and then I see the ranking, and then I can click immediately to the, some Realtor sites, and then I can find a house in that district. So there that is. At the bottom of the NISH site is something that says, "Claim Your School." And here's what it says. I, I, I didn't want to go onto the internet tonight, so I typed this verbatim from their site. "Get access to manage your school's profile on NISH. Track engagement. See user activity for your NISH profile, plus your competitors. Update your data. Help us keep your data as up-to-date as possible. Upgrade to premium and showcase your school and motivate next steps." So there, so I will openly admit, well, certainly not since July, but, you know, I'm, you all know I've been here for 10 years, and I would say that in 10 years, I have not once spent any time trying to promote or sell Merrimack on a site like this. And it's maybe time I did. Because apparently, there is a way to do this so that you actively manage the perception and therefore can influence the rank.
Well, just, I just, I keep looking at "Upgrade to Premium" with apprehension. And that is "Upgrade to Premium to Showcase Your School and Motivate Next Steps." So motivate next steps, but to me, that says to load the deck in your favor so your school ranks higher. And so if you pay us, it's, I feel more like extortion than I do validation and accurate data. When I see that, to me, that distorts. It's like, you know, the Better Business Bureau, you're going to get an A-plus ranking if you're a premium member versus if you're not. So, you know, I just, I worry about those things.
So my goal tonight, again, I want to be, I want to be clear. My goal tonight is, I'm not intending to discredit any of the, these are highly used, my intention is not to discredit. But, and I, I want to try to make this point. I've said before, I will own, as, you know, I'm the superintendent, I will own whatever Merrimack needs to do to be better. I will own it. I will admit X, Y, and Z, and we will work like dogs to make it better. And at the same time that I'm willing to admit that, I'm not prepared to have things like school rankings be used against this or any things like school rankings be used against this or any school without fairly talking about how they're derived. So I let that to be for anybody to dis- decide whether they're valid or invalid. I'm not making any of this up, this is, you'd see it if you went on their site, it's not that hard to find, but there it is. And so it does beg a couple of questions. My goal is not to discredit because I want, do you think that I don't want number one ranking next year on US News and World Report? And Niche, absolutely I do. But I'm a little bit concerned, uh, about the kinds of things that one must do to get that. And then I keep asking myself, is that representative of where we're really trying to go in this district? Because we're talking about authentic learning. We want students to actually understand what they're taught and not just prep for a test so it looks awesome on some state report. So I don't have to be embarrassed because some other neighboring district did better than me, us. And so, so that's not the game that we've chosen to play. And I think we've been pretty, um, I think on that point, we've been pretty consistent with this board for some time. We don't, we really have not ever participated in that kind of thing. I'm not suggesting others do, I have no idea what others do, I have no idea what others do. But Claim Your School is an interesting component of at least this ranking. Take it as you will. So, my final thought, and, and I appreciate your indulgence. I've been doing a lot of thinking about what it's like to be in this role for the first year, and I'm trying to really think about it, and you know, what should I do to help our students do as well as they can, and, and John and Matt, you know, couldn't work any harder to do the same thing. So, I know that judgment is made about all schools in every town and city every day. And that's fair and it's right. I'm a taxpayer too. I have, I have, you know, two sons, one of whom is currently in a public school and one who recently graduated from one. So I pay taxes too. I want transparency, I want the best for my children, and I don't want any less for anybody else's. So it's fair and it's right, um, that judgment is made. But judgment without understanding, I am gonna read this because again, I'm not sure that for people at home, they can see it. But this is truly what we feel. Judgment without understanding a context is unfair and inaccurate. We commit ourselves every day to acknowledging what can be fixed and setting about to fix it. We will always seek to control and correct what is possible to control and correct. But no school or school district can control where it is, how diverse it is, how safe the town or city it lies within is, who its students are, or what they need to be successful. Those are things we can't control. We take everybody. And we really do try to do the best we can with them, and we'll keep trying. But I think it's important as we enter a budget season where once again, we're gonna be asking the taxpayer to consider um, the enormous, you know, responsibility that it takes to, to, to support our community's children and the financial resources to do that. I don't take it lightly, and I think that the community deserves to ask, what about, what about? And so we've, again, we're trying to, we're trying to take it on head on, and we'll take our legs. And where there are things seem to be some judgments made that aren't fully formed, I, I think, you know, it's fair to raise that too. So that's the spirit with which I offer this, and I'm happy to take whatever questions you may have.
So Brandy and Cinder.
First, I wanna thank you. Um, I appreciate transparency. And I know I said this at our last board meeting, but I truly, I think it is in all of our best interests to be open and honest, and as you said, you know, own what you need to, but also, um, provide more information for areas of gray. I really struggle with school rankings, and I'm gonna speak for only my part of, of the board here and say that, um, comparison district to district frustrates me. Um, my reason for that is that I don't know what is happening in Bedford, Nashua, um, Manchester, and any other Amherst district that's surrounding us. Um, I don't know their students, I don't know their students' challenges. I can't speak to the day in and day out that those schools provide for those children. We can only speak for Merrimack. And providing Merrimack, um, children with the excellence in education, the trying to raise the bar, the consistent approach to changing and growing with the times, and providing new challenging opportunities for our children to learn. What that looks like in Merrimack might not look identical in Bedford, Amherst, Manchester, which then when you, um, expand the area and now you're comparing all schools in New Hampshire, that's even less of a fair comparison when you have schools that are like, um, charter schools or, or different styles versus public schools with a tremendous amount of students in them. There's so many variables, and there's so much that is different from student to student. I take my own three sons as an example and say, they're in the same exact house. I am raising them as close to equal as I can, but they could not be more different from each other. And they're in my house and it's only three. That being said, when you have thousands of students in one district versus hundreds in another district versus 50 in a small school environment, all of those variables are going to be totally different than when you add in needs each child. I appreciate rankings, but I appreciate them as one data point in this huge puzzle of how can we provide excellence in education? And if all we're looking at is where we fit on some ranking, I'm, I struggle to understand how that equals how excellent our education is and how we're providing that, how great our teachers are. I struggle with understanding where, where do these rankings allow for the wiggle room, student to student with each need? I, I don't, I don't receive that. And so, I think my perspective on rankings is, I appreciate your effort. I appreciate the transparency and you owning that, no, we're not number one. Yes, we all would like to be there, but at what cost? Are we all of a sudden gonna start saying, well, we wanna teach to a test? Or we want to be number one, so we're gonna buy whatever we need to buy, and we're gonna do whatever we need to do? Or are we gonna stay the course of saying, we want excellence in education, we want to train our teachers and let them thrive in the profession that they love so that when they are teaching, they're teaching with love, they're teaching with this passion that we all want our teachers to have because that will instill in our learners a passion for learning more and more and more. That to me is way more important than any ranking. So, i- is it important and am I glad that we spent the time on this? Yes. But my perspective is, I would rather our district focus on what's going to lead us to true excellence in education, not what a ranking says we're doing in education. Just my two cents.
Well, they're not wireless, so you can't do a mic drop at the end of that, but that's really good. Um, Cinder?
Well, I think Brandy said it best, but I would just say if we could just make sure this is out on our website, um, so these materials are available for anyone watching at home.
Thank you. And honestly, as I said, uh, um, many, many, many occasions that, you know, we have, we are definitely focused, we stay the course. We, we know what outcomes we're looking for as a district, we know what we're doing, we know what we want to do, we know what we want the end result to be. And it's always gonna be better than it was last year. We don't care what year it is, it's always gonna be the answer. That's the consistency of us. So the one thing that we've seen tonight is if these rankings are nothing but inconsistent, they are inconsistent. That's the only thing they are consistent about is being inconsistent in their measurements. So as soon as we are thriving to get to that ranking, suddenly the ranking criteria changes and everything we did to get to point A will put us at point Z. So I, I don't worry about those, I worry about things like kids getting into the college of their choice, getting scholarship options, getting, um, opportunities to, um, be exposed to trades that of, are of interest to them, that we give a well-rounded opportunity for them for college and career readiness. That's what we're here to do. Um, you know, when I look at some of the rankings, um, I look at things like, um, charter schools. And the one thing that they have is the opportunity to say no. Um, and honestly, that's why I think we're proud to be public school board members because we would never say no to a child that wants to learn. So we, there wouldn't be a lottery to see who's worthy of our, of our membership or not, we only look at the ZIP code. So, and I think that's something we should be very proud of. Um, in that we're still putting out such excellent results. I think, you know, when we talk about these rankings, um, the past grad, our last graduating class, uh, the valedictorian is spending her first year at Harvard, and the salutatorian's spending her first year at Dartmouth. Um, so it is saying that we have the opportunity for all to thrive. Um, whether you want to go to an Ivy League school, or you want to be a welder, if you want to be, um, the best at what you can be, that we've, we've prepared you and we've worked with you with our guidance, with our coursework, with, with the opportunities we have with, um, technical education programs. Where diversity is, is for the education that you want is at your fingertips. What do you wanna do with it? And I think that that's something we offer that many of these ranked schools don't. They get into an area that they feel that they are good at, they do well at it, and it does well for them in these little criteria. Um, so, but that's not what we are hired to do. You are not hired to say no to anybody. We are not elected to let you say no to anybody. Anyone that wants to come here that lives in Merrimack will get the best public education where, that's here to deliver, and I think we're doing everything we can do. And tonight has proven that through presentation after presentation. A good environment with a good curriculum, with a good approach to instruction, we'll get a good outcome. And I think everything we're doing is setting ourselves up for that. So I'm good, these rankings, we covered it. I think it's been, you know, as I call it, suburban legend that we are not doing our part. And I, I just, I'm glad that this opportunity was given to, uh, to again, you know, pretty much take that and take that information and just kinda put the farcness to it, so. And did you have a hand up?
So, I cherish the day when I'm no longer a school board member to allow me to go into the mud pits of social media to correct some of the misconceptions that are out there, um, because there are a lot. Your description of, um, what US News and World Reports does, it is what it is, you can't affect it. I don't believe for one minute that there's not a parent or, or a parent group that's not owning Bedford, some of these other schools that rank fairly high, to try to promote people to, to participate in Niche surveys. I'm wondering if we as a board, or we as a district, are doing ourselves a disservice to not want to have a group own the Merrimack School District on Niche and try to do promotion. If people are putting emphasis on a niche result, and there's a way that we can save factual information as part of Niche to improve our ranking rather than turning a blind eye to it, I say why not? Because it seems like it's, I don't wanna use the word cook in the books, but I've looked at some of the survey results of Merrimack and people that, sort of like when you do a survey about cars. The only time you hear is when people have a problem with the car. If you look at some of the niche surveys of Merrimack, a large part of it is people that have had a bad experience and feel the need to vent something or put a stake into the ground. People who've had a good experience may not be thinking of going into Niche and putting something good into it. So, part of my challenge to us is, why don't we? Why don't we take ownership? Why don't we do something like this? I mean, it's, it's just, this, this is the Andy wanting to do the network TV, yelling out the window saying, I'm as mad as hell and I'm not gonna take it anymore. Which is one of the reasons why I don't wanna be a school board member so that I can address some of the stuff that's out there, because it bothers me a lot.
Yeah, sure.
So, um, you know, you just actually, Andy, put your finger on, I think, the catch 22 that we've been struggling with for a long time. You know, we've said, we've said for a long time now that Merrimack doesn't do a particularly good job at sort of selling itself. We've said that over and over again, um, in many, many ways for quite a long time. And I don't disagree with that. So that's the one part. The catch 22 part is that why we haven't is because we have wanted to do the business of teaching and schooling and learning and researching and supporting. And we either crow about what we do, or we just do it. So where we have to find the, the, the balance, in my opinion, is in, um, not losing sight of who we are. Um, and, and doing a better job of communicating that to people, which we're trying to do, you know, now. I don't know if you were asking for my opinion about that, but I wouldn't particularly be inclined to want to generate, because that's kinda fakery to me.
I, and let me, let me stop you where you are, because I don't think I want administration to go to promote itself. It was more of a challenge to parents groups, the parents that are out, the school board to say, are we gonna just let it happen? I don't want for a moment, as one board member, to have you change what you do, because I support what it is that you do. But you said something in the middle that says, we don't do a good job of saying the successes, the good things, the positive, the results. The fact that we've got salutatorians and valedictorians in these schools. Because people just forget it, right? They don't look at the end of the graduation to look at the schools it goes to. People just look at, what does Niche say, right? And Niche is based off of certain things. So, maybe we as residents, taxpayers, need to do something to affect where we can.
Well, and I, and I think if I, if I could say, I mean, I've thought a lot about this, and I think, so, so, you know, and this is not everybody, but you know, at the end of each year when we present year-end things, I mean, I, I hear what people say, and they say, oh, there you are, self-promoting again. Um, but we didn't, you know, we're not importing children from other towns. I mean, these are actually our children, being able to actually show you what they do. I think, I think it's possible that the problem is that if all we do is show the good things and don't talk about some of the things that we can do better, then it gives people the impression like, do they not see it? Do they? So I, I wanna be really candid. I totally know that there are instructional things and curriculum things and process things and policy things and, you know, whatever, that this district can do better. And maybe strangely, we have to, you know, be more outspoken about those things so that people know that we see it all. Rather than just, you know, because, because, you know, if the only time we talk is to say how wonderful we are, and then there are other realities that we don't speak about, so I own, graduation rate, not awesome. But it's not as bad as people think. School rankings, not awesome, but look at how they're calculated and decide for yourself how much they mean. Um, so, so I think it's a balance of, you know, not just promoting, promoting, promoting like we're blind to faults, but then don't just beat ourselves up like all we are is a bunch of faults. Uh, because every day there's, and I will use the word magic, there is magic that happens in our schools. And just, you know, if you don't believe it, take a half a day from work and, and ask the principal to walk around and you'll see it. So, you know, that's also true. So we'll take the hits, but you know, there's also some pretty darn good stuff. Daily, I said this at August Academy, every day, 4,000, uh, close, close to 4,000 students come into this district every day with, I, I mean, an incalculable number of individual needs. And 8,000 parents or guardians and 350 professional staff and 700 custo- yeah, just numbers are pretty big, and we're a small town. And it works more than it doesn't. That's just, that's the fact, I'll leave it there. It works more than it doesn't.
Uh, Brandy?
I think it not only works more than it doesn't, I, I think that there's, um, sometimes people's perception translates into their reality. And without truly understanding the information and without asking and taking something that they see on, uh, social media or on a school ranking and taking that as this is, as opposed to challenging it and saying, okay, so, um, Mr. McLaughlin, I understand that we have, our school ranking is this way and our, our- our, our graduation rate is like this. Can you tell me why I would want my child to go to the Merrimack School District? And take that second, third, fourth step in understanding our district. And I think part of that challenge is how do we reach, how do we reach parents of up and coming children and share success stories with them about our graduates? And I know we have limitations surrounding student surveys. But we don't have challenges surrounding graduate surveys. So maybe we ask upon graduation if any graduates would like to share their success stories or things that they absolutely loved about our district or things that they would like to see improvements made, you know, areas of, of opportunities for growth in certain classrooms with certain policies that, you know, felt that they, it distracted them from learning, whatever it might be, that we open it up to our graduates. Because they've lived it for possibly preschool through twelve. And they've seen all the different buildings. They've seen the changeover. It's invaluable information to have from actual people who have lived in our district that went through each building. What would you have liked to have seen different? I, I don't, I think that would be great information to have to help us grow and learn from our graduates. Just a suggestion. But I, I truly, I, I think there's so much good in what we're striving to do. And I, I think the moment we stop trying to grow and stop pushing our bar higher and higher and higher, I think that's when we can say we're failing. But until that happens, I think we are all open for suggestions. The administration, the board, if it's constructive criticism and we can work with it, I, I can't imagine any of us saying, sorry, we're not interested. So again, thank you.
Okay. Oh, oh, you, okay. I thought you were pointing this up.
No, I was just, wanted to respond to Andy's comment, which was about, you know, the niche surveys and does it make sense to, and from my perspective, I wouldn't support that because I just personally, I just don't value the criteria. I don't value the methodology. And therefore, I just, I'd rather spend the effort doing some of the things that we were talking about, which is getting the good word out about things that are going on in our, in our district. So sometimes, and, and I know we've talked about that before, but I don't think we're doing a good enough job of doing that. Putting things out on our, like Facebook, you know, we win, we win state, or we go to this, you know, we go here and we go there and we do all these successes. But alumni love to see that. I get that from the district I graduated from way, way too many years ago. And I love it. I love seeing that they beat West Ottawa. You know, it makes me happy to see that. And so there's a lot of interest in that kind of information. And I think we could do a better job of getting that out there. The positive things out to the community. And, and I think we need to do it.
And, and I would support that as long as we did something. Because I think if we do nothing, if we ignore niche, if we don't take proactive role with communications and stuff, then we're in the same place we always were and we're going to fight the social media battles. And, and while I'm happy to go into the mud, when my term's over, I think there's things that we can do proactively. And it doesn't have to be niche. It can be the proactive communication too. But I think we have, as a clarion call, we got to do something.
And, and we, and I will say, I mean, we have begun. I mean, we now have a much more active Facebook page than we've had. And we're, you know, and we're not, you know, trained communication specialists, but we're, we're, we're working that soon. It will be Twitter and Instagram. And we have talked at leadership and we continue to talk about how we'll kind of marshal our resources to provide, you know, to get, to get updates of things that are happening that I might not know about or any of you might not know about, but that are actually happening. And so those, you know, those things are underway. But we've already begun to try to be proactive. Many things that we've talked about here have now been posted. So, and will continue to be, this included, if that's your wish, so that it continues to, you know, counter a narrative. So I, I wouldn't want you to think that we haven't begun that. The question is, can we continue to be more aggressive and use more platforms and more successfully? So bearing in mind, as Nancy Rose points out, that, you know, first and foremost, we're an educational institution. We're not a communications agency. We're not a public relations agency. We're educators. That's our first job. And so, you know, if the websites look a little goofy, you know, I mean, we've got part-time people working on them. Well, they do a lot of other things. It's not a complaint. It's just a fact. And so, you know, I mean, so, but the point has been well-made by this board and I completely understand it and we're working to address it.
Yeah, I guess my major point was really that I'd rather focus on those kinds of things versus trying to focus on promoting something where we may not necessarily agree with the methodology. So that's really what my point is.
Brenda.
What about doing a newsletter, a district-wide newsletter, quarterly or half a year newsletter saying what we've been up to in each building? Because if you're all in high school, if your family's in high school, it might not know that in the springtime, we have chicks at elementary schools that are just making all the first graders beam with excitement. There's not a whole lot that you know, building to building. I don't know much of anything that happens at the high school unless I hear from it, from a friend.
Johanna will tell you everything.
Yeah. So I'm wondering if maybe a district-wide, here's what's happening in our district, might be beneficial for, and give something for like those that families that are young and just starting in kindergarten and in first grade. You know, they get to see all the exciting things that each building is doing as their child, you know, goes through the ranks. So that might be something that we look into doing. Nothing that would be overly time-consuming, but maybe each building can provide, you know, what's been going on quarterly. And we put it in an email newsletter and send it out. You know, that way we can celebrate our successes. And here's what we're working on maybe. And, you know, a helpful little tidbit of upcoming, you know, things that we're, we're trying to do to improve our, our district. I'm just throwing it out there as a suggestion. But I, I think anyway, we can.
And where to find useful information. Because again, they would just not know where to start. And they, they're going to the private moderated pages of Facebook to get their answers, which is never, never the accurate spot. So interesting idea. And then I think, again, when we were talking about these rankings, they're being used for real estate. Well, the newsletter going to the Realtors, I think, for prospective families that want to move in would be a great thing. So, so maybe they'll use that instead of, you know, because I was, when I was looking at that, I was looking, I was thinking Glassdoor.com for the corporate world. And you, really, all the complaints you see, all, all the comments you see, it's the manager who's kind of defending his honor against those who are, weren't crazy about the manager in the first place. And that's why they posted. So again, there's not much in the middle. So agreed. Owning the message, I think, is the important thing. Because we have a lot to say, a lot of good things to say. So I think that's good. Any other questions? No, I think we're good. Thank you. It's a very good discussion. And speaking of very good discussions, again, I feel like we really are kind of having a very cohesive discussion tonight. Item number seven is the preparation of the school board budget message. So every year, the school board, each member provides their own ideas of what they'd like to see come out of our school budget process. Goals that we're trying to achieve, things that we feel that funding is important for, just goals of how to deliver that budget has always been part of it. And I know that, you know, this is Mark's first year with the budget. So I think more lead time, the better for him to be able to prepare and refine. So I don't know if this is too tight of a deadline, but I'm going to put it out there for discussion. If we can get the message back in, say, a week, and then at our next meeting, we could have the combined message. Whenever I provided that to the superintendent, since I've been chair, I've also given the organic individual messages. So anything that may not have made the whole thing, because it may have been a one-off, they still know what, what that board member wanted out of the budget. But I always try to find those overriding themes, making sure, because that's a true board message. And then, you know, the organic content that makes up that message always goes as well. So if possible, if we can get it for Monday, the fourteenth, and I could have it ready for the meeting on the twenty-first. If that did not work, we'd be looking at having the individual members' messages on the twenty-first and then having to discuss it at our first meeting in November, which is the fourth. So, so I don't. Email to me. And, and then I collect them all and then bring them to the superintendent. So would you feel that, being able, would you be able to make the fourteenth? Or do you feel that the twenty-first is necessary? Fourteenth? Okay. And I will let Naomi know as she is hopefully convalescing and not watching this. Because she won't get better faster if she doesn't get a rest and liquids. So excellent. So we will work on that. And so for the twenty-first, we will have our board cohesive board message. Of course, you'll always get the raw data that went into it. Onto item number eight, which is the resolution proposals for consideration by the New Hampshire School Boards Association Delegate Assembly. So again, I'm going to frame this a little bit. So I am still on the executive board of the NHSBA. So anything we decide to do as a board, I will likely step away from because of the direct influence I would have as an executive board member. I would be voting on the resolutions normally. So if you feel that there's something that we want to discuss or present as a board, I would ask that you go through Cinda on this. And that the four of you can present the idea. Again, I'm also not the delegates, because as an executive board member, I should not be voting as the delegate. Right now, that is assigned to Naomi with Cinda being our alternate. But if there are pressing issues in education that you feel are statewide impacting, that Merrimack as a board wants to take on, then that's something that should get, be gotten together fairly quickly. I believe that the deadline is middle of November. So you'd want to have something together by the first meeting in November if you chose to do that. We've done it once. There are districts that do it every time. And in my personal opinion, I think sometimes it waters down the, the sense of urgency when they always put something in every year. So, but if you feel that there's something overriding that you feel we need to fight the good fight for the state of New Hampshire, then this is the time to do it. Cinda?
So would something like the Medicaid funding situation that came up a couple weeks ago be something that might, we might want to consider? Is that inappropriate? Go ahead.
It certainly could be. I think right now, there's kind of a lot of dynamism with that. I do think that this board's letter and its kind of vocal support and the, I think that had an impact in a way, because there has been some guidance coming down from the DOE that hadn't been there before. And I don't know, I don't, I don't know whether it was planned. It didn't seem like it was planned to come and then it came. So I think that right now, I'd say, I don't know if, if that's necessary or if it is necessary, what it would be. So with maybe a little bit more unfolding developments over the next couple of weeks, maybe I'd have more to share about that.
All right. I mean, because we already wrote that letter, because it's something that we feel that we want to put out there. Just keep me posted and, and we can decide if that's appropriate or not. Because I think it comes down to being appropriate.
Yeah, right. Yep. Thanks.
Excellent. And now we're onto the housekeeping portion, which is item number nine, which is the approval of September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen minutes. I'll entertain a motion made by Andy, seconded by Brandy. Are there any edits? Cinda?
I just have one. On page fifteen, line five eighty, Vice Chair Gualyumi stated apparent reach out to her regarding the parking situation at the high school. I just wanted to say, to make the edit, that she said she had shared this parent's concern with Mrs. Putney, Principal Merrimack High School, and to Superintendent McLaughlin, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction for Brizzy, as well as Chair Burns. That's it.
Any other edits? Seeing none. We'll put the motion to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries four zero zero. Consent. I will turn it over to you, John.
Thank you very much. On tonight's consent agenda, we have one retirement, and that is Linda Mergo from Merrimack Middle School. And also on our consent agenda tonight, we have consideration of the reconstructed, reconstructed human resources office.
I'll entertain a motion made by Andy. Go ahead.
I move that we accept the consent agenda, which includes the resignation as well as the restructured human HR office as was presented to us.
Seconded, seconded by Brandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries five, four zero zero. Sorry, old habits. Onto item number eleven, gifts and grants under five thousand dollars with Matt.
Thank you. This evening, we have for your consideration from the Fidelity Charitable Foundation, a gift of two hundred dollars to Merrimack High School. It's in memory of Christopher Lammerow, two thousand sixteen grad of Merrimack High School, who recently passed this August in a, in a motor vehicle accident. So it's in his memory. And his interests really kind of were in the area of the automotive department. So it's to be used for the automotive department in his memory. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. I'll entertain a motion. Andy?
I move that we accept the, the gift from the Fidelity charitable, Fidelity charitable in the amount of two hundred dollars with our sincere gratitude.
Seconded, seconded by Cinda. A little faster this one. You were close to the last one. And, and honestly, I do know with Christopher Lammerow, someone that works on my team, went to school with him. And the day of his passing, he had just passed a certification for, for automotive. He worked in that industry and he got the love for it at Merrimack High School. So truly is a thoughtful gift and we thank him very much. So with that, we'll put the motion to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries four zero zero. We're on to item number twelve, course, twelve is other correspondence. Is there any correspondence to come before the board? Seeing none. Are there any comments from the board? Seeing none. We're on to item number thirteen, new business. Is there any new business to come before the board? Looking to the left, looking to the right, seeing none. Committee reports. Are there any committee reports from the board? Andy?
Well, just that a week ago, we had planning and building. And you saw the results of the thing there. So I just, there was a meeting before that the superintendent wasn't at. But the, the committee came together and sort of agreed on the direction. So.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Seeing none. There's no public for public comments on agenda items. So we will take a moment to sign the manifest. Now we'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, sections A, B, and C, made by Brandy, seconded by Cinda. Brandy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
Cinda?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. The motion carries four zero zero. Thank you and good night.